All right, everybody, we're gonna get started. Good morning, I'd like to call Adams County Supervisor to see about the meeting door. Mr. Brashman, would you start us?
Good morning. Then, Father, we thank you, dear Lord God, for allowing us to see another day. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you continue to bless us. Bless our elected officials, continue to keep them safe, keep them safe from any hurt, harm, or danger. Father, continue to strengthen them, give them new wisdom from Ohio. Bless their families and all the endeavors that they do for your people. And, Father, we just continue to pray for peace, oh, God, in this city, in this county, in this state, and in this country, oh, God. Father, continue to bless each and every one of us. And, Father, we just want to thank you, oh, God, for making ways for Adams County, continue to spare us from these storms, oh, God. And bless the ones that may have lost some love once in the last couple weeks, oh, God. Father, continue to give them strength and compassion. Father, we pray for our first responders. We pray for all our nurses and our doctors, oh, God. We pray for our kids and our schools, continue to keep them safe. Father, we just want to pray for economic development in this county. Father, continue to make ways and continue to open doors, oh, God, for our leaders and for our residents that we may prosper, oh, God. And, Father, we just can't forgive your name, all unoppraised, oh, God, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the old supervisor, Brandon, you have the positive votes. You have the positive votes. About the Indians, County Attorney Slaver.
Present.
Justice Clark, where you live.
President.
Deputy Clark, present.
Present.
And County Administrator Andy Kenny.
Here.
Nine, twelve. Next on the agenda, we're going to approve the dockets. Motion by Supervisor Hudson. Second by Supervisor Wilson. Any discussion?
All in discussion, I have is claim number two zero six three. Date is four twelve, two thousand and two, and I don't have a word against it.
All in favor? All opposed? Next on the docket, we have Justice Court Dill, August ninth, I think this will be seven to later. City Government Business, if any. Departmental reports.
Good morning, everyone. How are you? You put my eyes on me. Okay. Start out with...
Give me, uh, a couple of examples of who you are.
Um, Adams County Veterans Service Officer, Ms. Thompson. I'm gonna start out with talking about the record requests. Um, you know, there are the last two years, St. Louis has been closed, but now everything dealing with the federal government is back open. Um, record requests, they opened up on April the seventh, so the two years that they have closed, if a veteran requested records, they need to go back and redo that request in order to be able to get those records, because, you know, two years has passed and everything has just been piled up, so they need to go back and do that. Also, um, we use the system, what was called eBenefit. EBenefit ended on March the thirty-first and changed over to va.gov. EBenefit ended on March the first and changed over to va.gov. It is the same login and it's the same password. If you cannot get into that account, you need to call the money hundred number. If you don't want to sit on hold for fifteen to thirty minutes, less than an hour, you can go to Jackson, go to module A, and tell them that you are locked out of va.gov, and they will reset your password and everything for you. Uh, just like everything else, um, there's a shortage at the VA, I'll say. Okay, um, I got some information of individuals need to order medicines. I have a flyer here, it will tell you how to do it by the phone. I have to make copies and, you know, get the things made, but if you want to know medicines, you need to swing by the office, get this off that table, and order your medicine. Also, dealing with mental health issues, there's been a big, um, turnover at the VA. We got some social workers, didn't we, lost social workers? They still trying to hire social workers, so we don't have none really. But, well, veteran has mental health issue needs. Uh, I need you to swing by the office, pick this flyer up, and where you feel that you comfortable talking to, need to give them a call. So, it's like I said, there's a shortage everywhere, okay? Also, the, um, the Center for PTSD, uh, we've been talking about military sexual trauma really heavy here in the last, uh, guess two years since the pandemic happened. Now, uh, they created this app for victims of MST. Uh, I have a copy of the flyer at the office, um, you can have a copy of that flyer, and, um, this is really good information they put out there. They're trying to, um, um, just really get the victims into counseling, get them into talking, because, you know, um, as dealing with this, when contact coming to the office over there, it's things that they haven't even told their spouses. And, you know, and we have to break through that in that office in order to get them to move forward and to be able to do the things we need to do. So, it is something, the last two years at the VA has been strong, they've been working on it. Uh, they have just been, um, trying to help to get these victims the necessary help, because this is, uh, you know, they find out a lot of them know health issues are coming from things that most people, they're not gonna never tell you they've been sexually assaulted. And especially when I have to deal with my male clients, that's not something they want me to know as a female, but, you know, having a compassionate understanding, you know, we have to work through that issue, and, uh, like I said, they got some great information out there for them. Also, there's a group called Centers of Hope that located in Brideland, Mississippi. It's located at the Highland Colony Baptist Church. It's led by the veterans and it's open to veterans and their spouses, uh. If anyone's interested, you guys can come here, carry that one, and talk about it, uh, we can give them the information, we get them set up with that program, it's a twelve-week program. Also, um, you know, the latest is an issue with the veterans getting their tax, or a hundred percent permanent in total. Now, what the state of Mississippi has done, they used to require them to bring the letter in with the state cell. That is no longer required. The letter can come from any one of our offices, and anybody can, uh, print it, print it out, they got a computer to print it out, we can report it out from St. Louis, or from wherever it comes, but our tax offices, they were not accepting that letter. So, as of now, uh, we had a meeting last week with Stacy Pickering, that is the change, and they don't have to present the state of Mississippi letter anymore. It can be from any one of our offices across, uh, the United States. That's all I have.
Uh, Ms. President. Uh, Ms. Johnson, Anthony, you got, uh, very good information, uh, what other methods are you using to get this information out to the veterans?
Well, as of right now, nothing, because we have been in the COVID thing, and normally, um, before you probably got on the board, we had outreaches that, um, I would bring in Jackson, and we would set up, and they would pass it out, and all the information I just, um, announced, I'm gonna make copies over here, and they'll go on the table outside the office. So, my veterans stop by, they can pick it up, they can call the office number, six oh one four oh four seven eight hundred, pick it up, but whatever, I just say it will be out there. And eventually, when the VA lets them know they're ready, we're gonna throw an outreach here, so, but not right now, until they're ready.
I, I'm just concerned, uh, with all that great information you have, and people that really need the information, if they don't go by your office, uh, uh, somebody, they're not gonna be able to, uh, get the information.
Well, you know, this was the thing I suggested earlier, you know, before you came to the board, um, was to create a Facebook page, but, you know, Facebook just shut down for the county, and like I told Brandon, I said, "You can monitor it, I don't care, I just want the information put out there if we can ask Adams County, create a Facebook page." It didn't bother me, but who manages it? I don't care, I just, and they told me, "Well, you know, Facebook shut down." Okay, so, that's, that's something you all have to decide on whether it can be done or not, but this is something I did bring to mind, and, uh, with Facebook's shut down, and we've had a discussion recently, almost two months back, and he said, "I don't think that's gonna happen." I said, "Okay." I just, I just...
Well, uh, Ms. President, boy, with all the great information that Ms. Johnson have, and all the veterans we have out there with all the problems that they have, especially during COVID and mental health, uh, I think as a county, we need to find a better way to, uh, get this information out to, to the people that really need the information, because, uh, giving us the information, I know we know veterans, but the ones that we don't know can't get this information, ain't doing them any good, so, I mean, if we got all these good heads up here at this front table, and Ms. Johnson, we need to find a better way to get this information out.
I, I mean, I understand Facebook pitch question you have, ain't what a veteran, regardless of their computer setting, they know how to use Facebook. They know how to use Facebook.
Do you have a place on our website also that you could put in?
They, uh, well, Brandon does. But Brandon does, I take it too, he can do it. So, I think a Facebook page for the veterans of Adams County, because when you put information out there, trust me, they're gonna get it. And it's not just, you know, uh, my letter, I got other counties still calling me, I got people from across there that still calls me, because the person works one day a week. So, yeah, I, my responsibility is here, but it's gonna open up for everybody else, because then what they'll do, Ms. Johnson down there got a page created, while we don't have a page created, so they'll go back and tell their service officer, but I just, you know, whatever we need to do, how you don't have to, just let me know.
I think that's a good idea, and Paige, when you mentioned, uh, putting it on our website, that's good too, but a lot of people do not check our website unless they are looking for something.
That's true.
That's all the way from Facebook, that's a everyday thing, so that, that's something we need to definitely look into, put it on Facebook, and, and I'm quite sure we can do it just for the veteran service without all the other departments giving into Facebook.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Yes, uh, definitely, we can get a Facebook page set up, uh, wouldn't be much of a problem as long as someone is able to attend to it, uh, because it depends, I don't know what that interface, they could be coming for what time job in the city, uh, so, we just need to designate responsibility towards what goes on to that page.
But right now, I think we just want, let's get in with the veteran, we not own up a Facebook page for the whole county.
Right.
We just want the veterans to be able to get their information out. It's not a county page, it's a county page, but it designated just as, gives information to the veterans, so I don't think that should be that hard.
Oh, no, not at all, uh, that would be perfect.
Right.
Okay. Well, we just... Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
And then, I need to, both approval, we just can't do it.
Good morning. Good morning, board. I only have two items for you all this morning. My name is Frances Bell, I'm the Purchase Clerk of the Adams County Board of Supervisors. Okay, the first thing I'd like to, um, request to the board is that you all please spread across the minutes, the March credit card report that's been turned in to page as well as to bookkeeping, so that it can be spread across the minutes, and Bookkeeper's able to do what they need to do.
You heard the question, Ms. Bell?
So, uh...
Motion by Supervisor Hudson. Second by Supervisor Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I'll say.
And the last thing I need to bring to your attention, our request, um, is that I get approval to advertise for the equipment that the, um, Service Clerk and the Election Commissioner's Office wants to get. You know, they had spoken to you all, had the guy representing coming in from ESNS, and with the pricing that they already submitted, it's over the threshold that the board requires, it's over the threshold of what the state requires, so I'm asking that I'm able to, um, do the specs, get it out there so we can get some still bids in.
You heard the question.
I heard it.
So, by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor Gang. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, Ms. President, uh, this is to, uh, the County Administrator and, uh, the new young lady that we have for this position, literally she available to start?
She's gonna start on the twenty-second.
So, uh, you, from the twenty-second until today you leave, you gonna try to bring her up to speed on what's going on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is this not a single source purchase?
Well...
Uh, well, excuse my, uh, but it's got, that, that, this is my question was, I think the last time we came here is a single source purchase that I thought that they had, we had got a price on it, and we had knew, because we moved our state aid money, and we had, um, got it, uh, on it, so I think this says something about whether any, any more equipment in the area liked it, uh, because I, I think that's what they did, I, I wanna make sure that we be somewhere around the same thing, uh, just kinda explain us about that.
Okay, I'm glad you asked. Um, I did speak with Yazu County, um, their county, I didn't talk to County Administrator, but I talked to the Purchase Clerk for Yazu County, and speaking with the Purchase Clerk, it was determined that he did not handle the purchase, the County Administrator there handled. Now, they did do it as a sole source purchase, but in my opinion, and I'm speaking with the State Auctions Office, I don't think that was the correct procedure. And the reason why I say that is because it can be a sole source purchase if they already had that equipment in place, but I think they were trying to bypass during the guidelines for the state of Mississippi, and you all know, I've always tried to follow the guidelines for the state, so because of that amount, I have to advertise and get you all's approval to advertise. And, and speaking with the State Auctions Office, they were saying that the only way it could be considered a sole source purchase is we already had that equipment in place, and you all going with that same...
As we...
Mm-hmm, the same equipment.
Okay, that's, thank you for explaining.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I'll say.
And the last thing I have is that I wanted to get, uh, I, I'd like to be the servant for executive session, this is about five to ten minutes. Okay, thank you.
Good morning, morning, and it fails with email on this side. I just want to let you know, from April the first to, uh, April the eighteenth, the fire department had twenty-two calls, police department had seven fifty-three, the HSO had four forty-eight. Also, I'm asked for permission to hire a new person on fair play stripping.
You heard the question, Ms. Bell?
Sure.
Motion by Supervisor Gang.
Yes.
Second by Supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I'll say.
Also, when I was here the last week, and we was discussing proposed budget for the building, uh, we put one together, and did you do it too? I did, yeah. And, uh, Sky asked.
Do I have it?
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I can give you the money. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, board. Good morning, James Johnson, um, team issue, Secret Service. I have two things today, um, first off, we have twelve local four-enters, um, competing at the, uh, Southwest District Shooting Sports Competition in Pearl this Saturday. The competition basically, youth, um, do archery, air pistol, air rifle, we have twelve local four-enters been trained for the last two months, um, the program basically teach you to pop away, you to fire on, and also, and get them confident, so they'll be competing amongst, I think around three hundred to four hundred youth from the southwest part of Mississippi, so, um, we have, uh, five doing archery, three doing air pistol, and the rest of them are doing air rifle, so they'll be competing at this event this Saturday representing Adams County. Also, I'll be conducting a private applicator pesticide class this Wednesday, am at the extension office at two o'clock. This class is held to, um, people that wanna buy restricted pesticide, straight around the property, um, they pay twenty dollars by check or money order, it's gonna be in my office this Wednesday at two o'clock. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Well, appreciate it.
Good morning, board, grab a breath, and your Adams County Mercy Magazine. Uh, I just got a couple things this morning, uh, as y'all know, the last four weeks, we've been going through some tremendous weather, uh, and things of that nature, so I wanna commend the road department for sticking with us, uh, all times of nights, you know, dealing with this weather and down trees, and, you know, the great thing is, it's a blessing when you get nobody hurt like another county's, uh, or any of that, so, you know, we take that any day. I just wanna give the handsome guys for, you know, doing a tremendous job, also supervisors staying in touch with us, making sure their, uh, their districts are taken care of. Um, I spoke with Judges Moore, I know the board, we get approved about getting some showers at the safe room, uh, so he's in the process of getting those bids, uh, proposals out, and what I'm gonna try to do is hopefully, uh, get with Mema once we get a total price, see when they gonna have him on us with that, uh, so hopefully that occurs, some of the costs for the showers. So, our process is, we're getting two, uh, male showers and two female showers to go outside the door, uh, on the outside of the safe room, because we can't make any adjustments to the building itself, so they will be extended right outside one of the doors where they have to walk to, um, because I know the showers at the pool, they're just too far of a walk, uh, for individuals trying to get across the street, especially if they got any kind of special needs, so there'll be plans right on the other side of the door, outside door by the generator room. So, uh, once we get those proposals, I'll bring back to the board to get y'all approval on it. Y'all had already voted to go and get those done, so it's just like a COVID kinda put, put that on the background there.
Ms. President, uh, but let me ask you something, I did, uh, shower outside the building, uh, for safety, uh, what we gonna do for safety? I know they gotta have showers, but it's not inside of a building and it's just, they up, just don't have their own lit building?
Right, and we thought about the trailer, but the trailer, you gotta keep pulling in, and all the years that are out, so we gonna have to put a permanent structure like they did at the pool with those cinder blocks to kinda make it kinda strong for wind, so that's what we're doing, uh, and they'll be able to just go out the door, probably go about ten feet into the showers.
Okay.
You know, because I think that what we was using, we using a stepper business, but you have to go so forward in a stepper business across, you gotta get the keys, you gotta call the school, and, you know, depends on how those showers are able, the kids leave them, you know, they're not fit for any human use, you know, I'm not just saying that, you know, just, you don't wanna put nobody in there like that, so, right there, this is , you know, the problem, also, that, the doors being locked when they not in use, so nobody getting there during the weekends and things like that.
Excuse me, break. Uh, are the, uh, are you saying you can't attach the showers to the building at all?
Right, because you can't drill holes in the structure, once you, if you tap into the walls, you, what they call, you compromise the building structure.
Okay, so we can't put a doorway through the men's room and the women's room?
No, it's, you got, yes, that's one thing, yeah, once, the walls are, uh, twenty-four inch thick, and trying to drill through them, and, yeah, we don't wanna just, you know, like says a federal fund to build, I don't want them to come back and say, "Yeah, county, bring my money back," so, that's why we're...
Certainly, I, I just had to ask that question.
Yeah, we, we try, we even tried to look at a way, we can try to put it inside the restroom.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's hard, because you gotta knock through walls, because they already did the plumbing inside the walls.
It, it was a big deal, what this thing about the shower.
And I, I was looking at one of this, like, I was looking at it one day, and I was looking at the stalls, so, one of those stalls cannot be used as a shower, because I was looking at the...
Right, you got all the plumbing inside the walls, they were pre-cutting there, so you have to demolish the walls to try to put them, and also, it wasn't, the, the plumbing for a shower...
Like showers in your...
Yeah, it wasn't plumbing, right.
Why weren't they put it in the beginning? Because it was supposed to be a short-term emergency shelter, we didn't wanna have a extended term time to be in there.
So, so...
There was a very lively discussion back, way back when, if you remember?
That before I got here.
So, now that you mentioned it's supposed to be for a short-term...
Yeah.
...emergency situation, uh, what the purpose of putting the shower?
Well, it...
Because now you can hear...
The reason what it is back then, I wanted to explain it, you always wanna make a building where if you don't need, you don't need it, you have access already there, so what happened was, I think they was trying to cut costs, but a shower should have been put in there, also a base in the kitchen, you have a kitchen, but it's not a kitchen, it's just a room, so, I think it, I, I don't know, I wasn't here, but I think it was cutting costs, because they didn't put lights in the parking lot, which they would call for, so, that, just one of those things we, we had to deal with going forward, uh...
And I guess we learn from our mistakes, try to go and do it right the first time, and we don't have to come back to...
Right.
Well, well...
Do whatever we're doing, man.
Right.
President, um...
Your attorney.
The reason why it wasn't showers in there when it was filled is because it was supposed to be, you come that day, you stay, you move on the next day.
Right.
But now, you got people staying more than one day.
And, really, the real problem is, you can't, if they come, they don't have a place to go, and their house is destroyed, and they don't have a placement outside of that, then, so there's no choice for them to stay, and that's, that's the problem.
Right.
It was never built for it to be more than just, it was like, you wait out the storm in this building, and then you go back to your house or back to a longer-term placement, but the reality is, if your house got destroyed and there's no other placement, then you're gonna be there for the next few days.
Right, and ice storm kinda put us in the back, I was, that ice storm lasted a while, and those people, we couldn't put them out, so a lot of them stayed there three to four to five days, and without showers, so...
Let, let me ask a question, because at our last conference, uh, they brought up some very interesting stuff up there, and, uh, Congressman Thompson was up there, and he did mention something about homeless shelters and all that, and, uh, I'm not trying to tell nobody what to do with these, uh, baking stools that's gonna be available, but it was mentioned that, uh, there could be a possibility of a homeless shelter of, uh, a community, wherever, uh, I don't know which school might be available for that, but, uh, we, we, we just don't wanna leave them abandoned in neighborhoods when we can maybe turn them to a homeless shelter, uh, or something like that, and, uh, it's just about somebody to put it on the table up there, I'm just mentioning it here.
I understand, he also said, uh, the right supervisor, he also said that there was gonna be a lot of grants funded for that too, that's gonna be available for the homeless, so...
Now, don't you, would it, would it be true, I see, I mean, would they turn to the city property, or how would they...
Uh, I mean, uh, there's something gotta be negotiated or whatever, the case may be, because we don't know what schools they gonna use and what schools they not gonna use, but, but what we don't wanna have is just sitting over there being abandoned, and ain't nobody using, and then all the glass broke out and all that kinda stuff, so, if we, uh, have a homeless problem, then maybe we can turn it into a homeless shelter, because people been crying for homeless shelters for a long time, and, I'm not saying that'd be the best place, but it's better than just having a building to be abandoned, you know what I'm saying? Because I already have a abandoned old school in my area, and I showed them on there, I know.
Okay. Uh, another thing I want to request, travel from the board, from myself and Captain Tom McGee, to travel to Marion County for a local immersion planning committee seminar on April the twenty-second, two thousand and...
Motion by Supervisor Hudson. Second by Supervisor Gang. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I'll say. Do you have a call, or...
No, it's, oh, we's, we coming back, we not standing, okay, yeah, just turn it over. All right, that's all I have, pending, of course, before the board.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
I came over to.
Excuse me, name and department?
My name is Wally. I'm with the intervention court, sixth district intervention court. I'm paying the lawyer.
Can I give you the money back so we can get you there?
Okay, can you hear me now? Well, I wanna keep it on.
Oh, babe, keep it on, babe.
Okay, yes, let me get situated, situated. Okay, I'm coming over to get approval for, to go attend a conference, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Attend a conference. The conference is July the twenty-fifth to twenty-eighth in Nashville, Tennessee. It's, but it starts at eight o'clock on that Monday, so we're asking for travel on that Sunday. And I have all the documentation here if you want.
Do you have it?
I do, ma'am. We don't hold that up, please.
I can't, I don't have it. If you get my property, you're writing on it. Okay, just press. Yes, I didn't know how I never just prepared it, I don't think you just.
We don't have a war.
Okay, all right. Additionally. We, we are, we are a team of twelve, I think there's only five that's saying that they have time to go to that conference. There is another conference that's happening in August, the Mississippi Association of Girl Corps and Professional.
Questions for, uh.
What's that?
Is it ever just handed for all of them to attend?
She is there.
Is it in our budget?
It surely is. We have a trouble too, we haven't, we haven't tackled it in the last several years to the national.
You heard the request?
So.
The motion, my supervisor's going to say. Same, who else, any discussion?
Say, was it in the budget or is this gonna be?
There's two budget we're using, we're using the grant as well as intervention court. The one twenty-five, one seventy-four, four seventy-five, also the one eighteen, one seventy-four, four seventy-five.
They're going to, they're going to national. There's another one, the Mississippi one's mandatory, they need to get to that one. I'm not saying need to, after that one, kind of, this is like a.
They had the one that's going up in Mississippi.
Until the better than national one, and they not have proof of this.
It's, they're, they're bound, both of them were placed in a budget.
Well.
I think there's three from the grant and two from the intervention court.
I mean, if it's not in the budget, we can, just need to know about it, you know?
All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you. Now, the Mississippi Association of Girl Corps Professional is going to appear in August twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth. I, I am on the committee, the planning committee. The plans are not complete at the moment, but we did come up with a date, and it will be on, uh, it will be at the Luxe at the Superior Palace. But the plans, everything has not been completed. As a matter of fact, I have a meeting today, I zoomed with him. So I was just letting you know, I'll come back when everything is complete with this. Thank you all so much, and you all have a great day.
You too.
Did I break anything?
You see the beam?
I broke it? Excuse me, my phone got out, I'm gonna have to pay for it.
It's like there is a.
Oh, they're not gonna let me come back?
No.
You all have a great day, thank you.
Morning, holders. Morning, I have an interview tomorrow. First thing I have this morning.
Excuse me.
I asked the meetings over ago about advertising in-house or assistant road manager. But made my selection, I'm ranking for the board today, it's named Tim Chapman. They, the Stanley Games is like.
I have a question, yeah. He has, can he, he said something, I'll prove, does he make a decision, tell them?
So approve of Tim Chapman as assistant road manager.
Motion my supervisor, second, second my supervisor game, is any discussion?
All, all the discussion I had arrived at, I ain't got nothing to do with who you hire, but when you're moving from one position to another, I just want to make sure that, to make sure that this individual succeed at being, wherever you put him in, that he has a necessary training. That's all I'm saying. Make sure he has a necessary training.
And that's good, they're gonna come with signing, paying, everything, right?
Yes, it's gonna come with the game, pay and everything, like, you know, and that'll start once Saturday. Tired on the twenty-eighth, but I just want to give him that spot, you know, as of today, that he start to work on this game myself. I mean, I've rode him around a little bit with me and spoke, you know, talked with him, showed him some stuff, but yeah, that's, it will, after the twenty-eighth.
So bring that shot to the next.
I'll bring it to the next board, be.
And the other question. Bring what you have done will have an effect if the win complete starts. And just go ahead and bring on.
And the other question is, are you planning on placing Mr. Chapman's position now, Bill?
I'd like to advertise for his position, you know what I'm saying? I'll do it in-house, but then I still need to feel that position in that county department, because I get sure.
That's why, that's why I said, because we don't need to.
Yes, I'm asking for that.
My supervisor, second my supervisor game, is any discussion?
What is his type?
A Mormon.
What is Mr. Chapman's type?
He, he is a Mormon on the south end.
A structural Mormon, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next thing I have.
Do you care?
Yeah. Do you care?
All in favor?
I care.
All opposed? I said.
Okay. Next thing I have, we've been doing some work on Hammond Street. And I spoke with Mr. Gaines, there's three lots down there that a resident is concerned about. There are two hundred Hammond, two oh six Hammond, two ten Hammond. They are all of their own ones that burn up houses. Need some attention, I'd like for Mr. Slubber or Mr. Gaines approval to move forward, or Mr. Slubber to get it. Took care of the two K lot.
Right. I think it's great, because I need to make most, him, he can just move forward, get the address. On the two K lot, and get the address from him and move forward with, get his contact from the landowners and see if they clean them up. And if they don't, then we can come back before the board and go back through the minority parties.
I mean, that's the way it goes now, to the supervisor, and then supervisor to the attorney, and that's correct. Just start with your honor, yeah, correct.
Supervisor will take revenue from the road manager and give a turn to opportunities. Be the okay, the necessary paperwork, and if it come back, we can, you know, we can vote who we need to do, you know, and get the address.
Okay.
All right. Next thing I want to bring up, the sand road, I know I've had people calling, I know supervisors had some calls about Coppers Point. We got three blowouts on that road, and I know it's oil production and things like that down there, and they want to get started. But I looked at the forecast of the river this morning. It's finished rising, as of today, it's going back to forty-nine and five, is what the crest is, what they're predicting on the, in April, I think the twenty-seventh is that date. So I don't think we need to go one spot we can get to, but if we fix it now, it's gonna blow, you know, start blowing back out, so. We got about another two weeks to deal with the river before it starts dropping. So I just want to bring that before the board, because I know y'all had some calls, I think Wes, I think Kevin had some calls on that, so I did look at it this morning. Other thing I have, Ms. King, EWP, nobody know your gloves, the two spots there in the low water bridge, if we ever get that signed. Back to the norm.
We received the funds, I didn't think to sign the funds well, so all the, is he coming to do it there?
You had some of that, didn't you?
We got something, the two hundred and twelve thousand.
Okay.
The other two, we haven't gotten back yet.
Okay, these are like seven, seven hundred and some thousand, we haven't received.
But Grant completed those and it's been submitted.
Okay, on the map, two pots, might know your gloves.
Right. That's all we can see, two hundred and twelve thousand. The only thing we received was the first one, for the two hundred and twelve thousand.
And Mr. Bragg, there's both the storms, the last three weeks, we've had a lot of storms, last night we were long out last night, and then this morning, we got up, you know, had trees and power lines on equipment road, which spoke of the power company this morning southwest, they did remove on it tonight. We, tree should be removed as we speak this morning. Churchill Road had five trees down on here, one was bank to bank, big tree, so we waited till this morning to try to get that removed. But if y'all have any calls or whatever, let us know, but it is a lot of problems and road department, of course, trees down throughout the county in the last three weeks.
Uh, Mr. President, I think I kind of, I think we all kind of agree with supervisor Gaines, he been so adamant about saying that the road department is first responders. And the first time something happened in this county, trees down, whatever the case may be, and the first people that they call is the road department. I mean, we may need to get out there and say something here and explain to them exactly what Mr. Gaines been trying to say for a while, and road manager's been trying to say for a while, and I think the entire board trying to say for, for a long time that those individuals are first responders, because they the first one to get to the job to open it up for everybody here.
And the last ones home. And hope we make it there safely, we've been very lucky. I tell y'all in the past of what we did with it night, Gaines, noon, first AM last night, I mean, you get out there in the dark, salt, get home in trees, and they go to popping and doing, but I mean, that's our job, and we do it the best we can do. So I appreciate that, Mr. Gray, we're gonna work on that from the conference in June, we'll go to the road manager association. Talk to the road manager, say about that.
Mr. President, could you get whoever represents y'all with the road manager association and talk to the sheriff association representative? Because some, some people somewhere in.
Southwest PPD.
Yeah, they say that they can push it a little bit too.
Okay, and like I said, we spoke to Melanie Soder on a local level, I myself and May has, you know, trying to get this took care of, but I will, like, send the vice president to chat.
Yeah, they gotta get the association.
Then I will address that.
We, uh, Mr. President, we was at a Southwest PPD meeting, I guess, about three weeks ago, with the president, the Association of Supervisors. And this topic has been discussed throughout other counties, but they said, if you have a Bella, I ain't no going at it if you work with your sheriff, because the sheriff of the county, the sheriff's association has a lot of power, or more power towards doing that. And he said, so it would be much better if we can work with the sheriff's association to get, to try to get that done. So I did bring it up, so I, I kind of fight it everywhere I go, I act about it everywhere I go on conferences, small conferences, big conferences, because it's like last night, well, I couldn't help but be out, because it's my own neighborhood, which I'm out with everybody else's neighborhood also. But we had people trapped in both ways for probably at least four to five hours, you know, it started with small tree. We couldn't get, you couldn't come from Pine Ridge Way, you couldn't come from Airport Way, couldn't come from McGee Way, we had trees blocked, and you had a lot of residents, probably a hundred residents. If something were to happen last night, you couldn't get five ambulance, uh, police or sheriff there. So, you know, of course, I'm gonna be there, and I do it not just because of my neighborhood, I do it for the entire county. It could be either one of our districts, because we all have the units, my comes all across. So it is important, Mr. Dollar, we'll be continuing to fight for this as long as we here, well, I would definitely.
And I appreciate that, that'd be a big help to them. The last thing I have, truck workers are having a be in Jackson Thursday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. I would like to beg myself to give a, attend that event.
You heard the request, road manager?
Oh.
Second my supervisor, who else, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
I have a question for a little more, because I received an email this morning from, from the breed tech auditor.
Correct, I have sent one.
He is, he is, and he sent it thirty, right, and that's not what I have.
Okay.
So anyway, I had to follow up on, on the difference in the amounts. But have we heard anything from, because I remember we had to make the payments by February, the, the month of February. But I haven't heard anything from the federal funding or from the breed or from Dozer. So I'm just trying to figure out where are we at this point.
So you hadn't heard anything?
I haven't heard anything from anybody.
Okay, I'll, I'll check when I get back an email from you and find out where we at. But I did get that same email this morning.
I was thinking we had a deadline as to if they determined whether we was gonna refund it back or not. I haven't heard anything. Hi. You.
Yes, uh, Mr. Road Manager, I do have, we kind of breezed it, I spoke with the last name while I got the call, I was out there with, uh, Brommore. Had, but it's just, it's several callers, weight limit signs for trucks, you know, I have a resident call, say, I understand people gotta work, and I understand him, the climate infrastructure. No load is trying to get a weight limit sign, so you won't have loaded log trucks coming through, because we know problem, we citizens have a lot of water problem, they were saying load the truck. Weight limit sign for that, and we have a ride away off of Country Club, the Chinkapin, directed behind us, Dawn, Dawn, Dawn's house. And we was just trying to see can, would it be, can we get that sprayed to kind of stop some of the grass that won't grow up? Because with the rains, we've been getting, it's been fine, it's been taking a water pretty good, but when it grow up, grass up, you know, it makes it bad up that whole country club. And then, and I was just, I hadn't been through this week, but I know when I rode through last week, they hadn't had that no dumping sign up. At the last product, I finished at the end of Brooklyn and Mac Nolie where it come from. Yeah, not, yeah, in Brookfield, and I know we been busy, so I understand, but I just wanted, um.
I did go by there, Mr. Gaines, that's what I brought up last week, just got to meet somebody that made good fellow, just, just weird names.
Yeah, we already know, and that's what I told residents, and I still will say this again to residents. You gotta be able to see something and say something. You know, I'm, I'm out here as a supervisor, and that's why I'm trying to put it out publicly. You can ask me something, and I will represent you, but if you want to back me up when it comes time to, when I bring it to the table and say, hey, well, we got somebody dumping, and you seen them dumping, you want me to do the sign, get with, take the necessary steps, get with the necessary people and get it. But if you want to tell who dumping, and you know it, it's hard for us to do something, I'm pretty much sure I can get with the sheriff department. The sheriff has been good, pretty much, your chief that was sharing, he'll be there right there with us to support us. If you can get tag nose of people dumping, if you say something, we can get it fixed. So I, I do ask the people to try and support that, with, I mean, that's from the road department on down. If you give us something, I do address it, but if you don't have, if you can't stand up and, and be able to witness it, or get us a picture with a tag nose, it's not a whole lot we can do.
Anything else going on with your, your second street? Anything else going on with your second street uh part to beat trucks? Uh I had a resident this morning stole city college here, called me a couple of times, they've come out, spoken with them, and there's a loaded truck, uh loaded vehicle parked blocking two yards there at night. And they parked on school property, I says, what's the school, I said, we're forward in the street, we can discuss that, uh you know, but it is happening on second street.
Yeah, and I mean, I understand people got to uh work, you know what I'm saying? I'm not trying to stop people from working, I wouldn't be an issue if the school don't say something about parking, I don't have a problem with the same.
And that's what I know.
But uh if it's if it's obstructing a county road and deteriorating county road, but you got residents, you know, get it wrong. It hurts me to have to get up here because I don't ever want to stop a working man from working. But I I also, I represent all the constituents in my community. And if you got uh streets has uh payment here and you're gonna tear up a street for two hundred people, I mean, it's just something that's gotta be addressed. And I appreciate how you do it, though.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
On your problem, Petrie's Street.
Yes.
How do you balance, you know, your streets with people that that do that?
Good morning, board.
Good morning, board.
Uh just give some little dates, uh twenty sixth of the O D A, contract has continued greater slopes. He's also began placing the required roof wrap along Repose this year. We know that the last three weeks the contract has been pretty much hindered because of the weather, but they're still trying to make as much progress as they can in between weather events. Um he has not delayed the project much, maybe about a week or two, uh but we still should uh be making some more progress with the dry date that we have here. Uh as far as the twenty eighth, um SAP O O one eight and O M, that's a tripping on the project. Um we we uh we got, we received the uh, we're gonna receive a contract back from the county uh that we had got signed last time, we're gonna submit that to the board, to the spread on tomorrow. So hopefully we get that approved by them within the week or next week or two, then we can move forward with being that project constructed. We still don't anticipate that project taking over in a week or two, so still we're gonna work for weeks and maybe share their projects right. The EWP group four, um we requested, we submitted a budget increase and a time extension to NRCS for that consideration. Um I talked to Mr. Norman Adams on Friday, we will get the budget increase, but they need us to complete a revised uh federal assistance form, uh SL four twenty four. Um and so uh we've completed the form with the required information, it just requires the hazard for, required to have the board president's signature for, you know, to submit back to NRCS in order to get the approval funding increase. But if I could, can I get a first, a motion to buy the board president's assignment?
Sir.
Notice my supervisor Hudson, second by supervisor Gang, any discussion? All in favor? Uh all opposed, I say. Uh the last thing here, the rate grant, I know we we tried to
When you get that 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 document, you need the president to sign, make sure that you copy the page for the minutes, okay?
Okay, I I have a hard copy, but I
You got a hard copy, okay, sorry.
Um the rate grant, you know, we worked with the uh several counties, uh Jefferson County, Woodson County, Franklin County, and all of corn to submit for two thousand twenty two rate grant application. Just wanted to know that we just went on behalf of Adams County and then the application was successfully submitted on last Thursday, so we'll just be waiting um to see what the results are, if we can select it for our project. Any questions about that?
Time frame?
It it take one.
Take them.
Yeah, almost a year, you know, almost a year.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they just did one, one was just did, submitted, we submitted one one time for, but we didn't uh get it, someone else got it. So this is another one being submitted.
You know, we submitted last July for two thousand twenty one, and then we just submitted again two thousand twenty two, so yeah.
It's a nationwide program, well, I'm glad, I'm I'm glad that came up, I'm happy that it's, and it came up, I don't even know how long it's out. And you know, it's it's just, so it's nationwide, it's not just a countywide program, so you just really, it's up in the ass, count. You don't really know where it's gonna fall, it's up in the ass, and you would tell them, really have ideas, if it's a good thing, if it's a bad thing, how what's the chance of getting, you just really don't know what's gonna happen.
And what what you can do is what we get what we get by the time is, I was hoping you can ask for a debriefing and they'll they'll tell you what your rating was and all of them.
I got you, okay, I appreciate it.
We highly recommend, we just didn't go to the prospecting.
I got you, I got you, I appreciate you.
Uh bridge inspection, well, last week we performed manual bridge inspection for Adams County. Um we were able to complete the field work on in in just one week. Uh one thing that we we that we asked for a few times is previous bridge reports that were done by the previous engineer. And so we've asked for that a few times, and so it would have been very helpful to have that information before we did our bridge inspection. But we have not received it, um I was supposed to get it last Thursday, I didn't receive it, and so now I've been told in the middle of this week. So we didn't want to have us getting previous bridge reports, that would be greatly appreciated.
Scott, uh, Mr. President, Scott, what can we do about that force of having getting these documents across? Because it's been pretty much ongoing, um ongoing thing for probably almost last year and a half, and they ain't propped to do their job if they don't get what they need. So what can we do to try to make sure that they get what they need so they can see if they can successfully do their job, you know what I'm saying? Because we can rate everybody the same way, we want you to do our job, if you do your job right, then it, then uh we hold you accountable either way it go. So if you can't have a necessary tools, you can't succeed, so add a board and uh we pay for those things. What can we do to make sure those documents are turned out?
George, just email me a list of what you're requesting from them. And you know, what I'm gonna do then is, uh because I know they still have invoices coming in, well, they want to get paid on their invoices, then they need to give us the documents, we need
They just got one, big paycheck.
Well, I mean, they're not gonna get it.
For that Morgan Town too, you know, we've been for that a few times.
I was gonna ask him about that, Nick, he gonna give a report on that.
Okay.
Um and just with the bridge inspection, once we complete our uh report, any critical findings or anything like that, we'll let you all know. And of course, we already talked about one on
But yeah, shoot me what you need, we're not giving them our paycheck, their paycheck until they give us what we need. I mean, that, you gotta make it a priority for them.
Thank you. Uh primary request, uh primary request, AT and T requests permission to install fiber optic cable along Stalman Street to provide service to five Stalman Street, no interruptions, no interruption to traffic.
When you get there, I'll talk about that, I mean, I just wanna say something about this board when you get
Okay, um they're gonna be, they're, they'll be born to there be no interruption to traffic, and they hope to complete that work within a week.
And I wanna say this, why is on this board, we've run into it several times in the last several months. Uh they go in and bore these roads, uh they find rat holes, I guess, is what I'm saying, then the water starts following that, then you have a big erosion problems in the ditches, then it starts in the road. They crossbore them, it come in the road, we dealing with one now, thought we had it fixed, ref, you call us back, it's not fixed, I get back with AT and T, then you know, they saying they going to fix it, uh me and Wes was in the area the other day, so I looked at it, we're dirt, we're down right there, that's all they did, that's my hope. Um I know other counties, and I don't know if we need to start this, you know, they hold us liable, kind of accountable for what we do. If we hit a line or this or that, whatever we may do. Other counties is charging a permit fee to uh get permits to the counties to uh bore and do things like that. I don't know if that's something we need to do, because it does cost us when we do hit a line or something, you know, when we do get locates, uh but it happens. And uh you know, I mean, they want to charge us, and then I think, God, we still fighting a couple outstanding things now, or just that pay them, you know, through, so uh I don't know if that's something we need to look into, or just make sure they do a better job when they do it.
No, Mr. President, uh Mr. Train, what do we need to do to look into doing exactly what the road manager uh
Well, the first thing is, what type of cost is it costing us to do? I mean, when they go and bore, do we have somebody go out there and look? And get, well, for instance, we have our engineer say, this is a good plan or a bad plan, do we have Robbie come up there, see, look at what your true costs are? And if it's something that's material, then you enact the ordinance that they gotta go through for their permitting, and they already have to get permitted, if I'm not mistaken, through before they do it on the road, and just include that fee on the on the application permit.
And you know, all the counties, then they have a little money in separate account, if they do get a line or whatever, then they pay their fine out of that account of what they collected from these contractors, you know.
Could you find out what they doing in other counties and bring that to us, maybe we need to adopt something like that, man? Because we we shouldn't be going through the same thing over and over and over.
We we're dealing with that right now, like
I think that's something we always talked about this, and you know, we want, we talked about it, but we never put it in motion to go ahead and uh deal with it. So that's something we need to look at doing. I think we have, did we get some from other counties about that before?
We did, I've got everybody's
Just all that information that you have gotten before, and let's let's go ahead and make a motion on it, and you know, do what we need to do, because we've been fighting that down for years.
Yeah, I think I even had to grab the ordinance available, if we enacted, is that what you're saying, or I do?
Robert?
Yes.
When they bore a road, were there any requirements to uh fill in the hole? Like put cement around it or anything like that, or is there a better way to do it?
Not that I have any idea, but that's what I'm saying, it needs to be something, because I mean
I was I was thinking bigger cities or a lot of counties, if you bore under a road, and he's talking about mouth holes or whatever, you know, we're talking about rigs, whatever. And you 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 make a path for water to go in, so you need to seal it when you get through. I mean, we do drilling all the time, we have to pump cement and everything we drill, uh to close up all the holes and gas. But if that's an ongoing problem with that, surely there's a better way to finish out the that project.
The project, when they get, you know, make sure
To seal it off, make sure no water is gonna intrude on it. Just a thought.
On that application?
We got, do you like us to um prove this permit for this work?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we should Most of my supervisor Hutchins, can you say? Second by supervisor Wells, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? All opposed, I say. On last week, I received an email from requesting a uh updated estimate for Morgan Town Road. Of course, this estimate strictly off of the quantities that were submitted, so I have not done any design, just, yes, these came from the previous engineer. I just took those same quantities and adjusted them to prices based on the more recent unit price that we received for these payments. And so in updated budget for just for the construction is four point two, uh four point two new. Um if you add engineering to that, then you're looking at about four point five million, and that's just engineering, it's the actual construction on the site and uh inspection.
I'm gonna take you to the board.
Like I said, that would be strictly just off of what's our design plan apparently, because I have not seen those plans, so the plans that I guess the previous engineer designed.
So with the two point four that we supposed to be getting from an E R M A R to the Morgan Town Road, and uh everywhere I go, everywhere I hear, uh the cost of construction is gone up. So so at the end of the day, that two point four gonna be enough to take E R Morgan Town Road?
No, it is, you don't say it too.
No, you just
Yeah.
Go for a little bit.
That's additional to the two point four we already
So this is the total construction cost.
And how much is it gonna be?
With the with the engineering oversight, it'll be four point five.
So you're looking at two point two, one, yeah.
So my question is, Scott, uh being bored, uh the state legislature had all that money for shovel ready projects, and I've asked to submit to our legislative uh Morgan Town again, where uh we do have a shovel ready project, and can we mingle federal funds with state funds to be able to uh finish our Morgan Town Road? Have anybody submitted anything to our legislators?
We're waiting on a process to submit.
Now we got two, four point five.
Four point five leaves us with two point one additionally needed, is that right? Two point four?
Two point one.
Yeah, I'm not good at swiping a lawyer on that thing, right?
And he has not looked at the design, so he
He hasn't looked at his answer, not found a price.
It's an estimate, and that's what we're doing, we're estimating.
No, but you ain't getting all the estimate in there, yeah, if I'm hearing them correct, now you correcting me if I'm wrong, that's just on what he had, that's not uh a found, uh that's not a side of price for submit for money.
Well, we're gonna have to come out of pocket anyway on money, so if we able to take what information we have and request for that kind of thing.
Man, absolutely. Um just, well, it's hard for you to guesstimate, because you don't have an idea what would be some ground total cost, that, but it's gonna be more than that four point five with everything at the end, am I correct, or I'm hearing you wrong?
I mean, you're correct, because if engineering is included, you make a little bit another hundred and ninety, that's worth engineering, just based on our typical.
It's just a rough, we've been using the same figures to be asking for the federal monies that we eventually got, and so this is just updating those figures for what are gonna be done.
But what I'm saying is, we don't borrow money anyway, and that's why I asking for estimate. So you saying another two hundred thousand, uh back to a hundred and ninety seven thousand? So I mean, if you gonna ask for, you might get it, might not, at least ask for at least a current amount, and whatever else we had to fund, we had to fund it anyway, but the last week the fund be the best.
Two point three.
Let me say this. The first was, what, three point four million dollars? We was gonna have to put a hundred, what, a million dollars for that, now it has gone up to four point five, uh that's the estimate. Um and like you say, the cost was about a hundred and ninety one thousand for engineer. Um when you said we're gonna have to borrow, let me say that this here, we was at the conference, at our conference. Um we may not even have to look at borrowing money because we would, our understanding is now D R A has money out there for matches that you don't, you can like use this match money to do these kind of projects with, without having to borrow. They say it's plenty money out there for those matches, and people not dipping into it. So we need to get with our software's planning and developer, and I did speak to uh Lynette Smith about that, about the D R A money that's out there that we're not tapping into. She's supposed to come, I asked her to come to this meeting, but she said she had a meeting in Brookhaven, so she'll be at our next meeting. We need to start submitting applications on this money, because there's so much funding out there that we're not tapping into, or they not letting us know that this funding is out there that we can apply for. We shouldn't have to be coming out our pockets, or or not our pockets, but the county pockets or our constituents for this kind of uh money when it's out there available to us. So that's that's something we need to look into. So using this estimate, like supervisor Ray said, maybe we need to go ahead and submit this to our legislator just to see how much they gonna give us, because they're not gonna give it to us all anyway, but we can get whatever they give to us if in. So that's what we went on that first estimate cost.
My my own, my own concern is, I agree with everything supervisor let you say, but the only problem with Southwest planning is uh we got to have a plan for them to go look for whatever we need them to look for. It ain't their job to come to us, because they represent eight or nine other counties, they always tell us uh what y'all need. Now we have a big old thing from USDA with all these funders on, and they gonna give them a copy of that, and they can figure out what uh on this USDA paper I got to match some of this funding we need with D R A and whatever else. But uh they they not gonna be able to come tell us, we got to tell them what we want them, what what we want them to submit. So uh I'm kind of disappointed, I'm just gonna be real, I'm kind of disappointed, we've been fighting for Morgan Town this long, and and other engineering firms know doggone well, that two point four was not gonna be enough money to uh even halfway complete Morgan Town Road, and they ain't yet to even say to, uh, even halfway complete Morgantown Road, and they ain't yet to even say nothing about it. That's just disappointing to me. I mean, uh, at the end of the day, uh, this county been good to, uh, J K and his. And, uh, at least they could have a courtesy to come to the boardroom and tell us that the two point four was not gonna be enough to, uh, finish out Morgantown Road.
Just forward to everything, and I'll add. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Ricky, you know the timeline of the state excess funds, that's gonna be given out.
I mean, it's crazy. Enough three times.
It is away with, it was the design phase.
Yeah, for all, I mean, it should be a five weeks, it took a month.
Yeah.
But come to find out, she said, man, you really have to, you know, they couldn't took it. Go ahead.
Good morning, board. I just have one thing. Uh, Mr. President, you should have, uh, we'd like to hire two employees, one for deputy, one for jailer. Uh, the deputy is Rihanna Mayberry at the rate of sixteen oh one, and the jailer is Robert Green at the rate of twelve sixty.
You said, did you say?
Rihanna Mayberry.
Rihanna Mayberry and Robert Green. You got a third one in there, Rachel Davis Howard, we're gonna hold off on hiring her for the moment.
Okay. You heard the request?
So.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
I, I, I'm just guessing I have, uh, think I'm gonna have a problem holding on to our, uh, workers with, uh, especially, uh, the chef department in E nine one one. Uh, we, we, we need to figure out, uh, what the problem is, if, if, if money or whatever the case may be, man, because, uh, from what they paying a jailer, I don't think I could be in there doing that.
And if I may speak candidly, it is very hard for us to find somebody to work in those conditions for twelve dollars and sixty cents an hour. The only people we can find are younger people or people that have any kind of corrections experience that are wanting to move back to the area. But then once Core Civic or the federal prison over across the twenty seven rivers or whatever it is, that's, we tend to lose some to, to those locations. It is very hard to find people that are established here with a family, because you can't, you can't support a family on twelve sixty an hour. Because that, that's the quality of people that we're having to hire, or the applicants that we're getting. We're getting the applications, but it's just not people that's wanting to make this a career, a step and stuff.
Training is considered just for people, for the, go across the river.
And, and it's hard on us every time we lose somebody, uh, between the uniforms, the equipment, the training, and then turn around, have to restaff, uh, that, that position. I mean, that's just, that's the situation that we're having to deal with at the moment.
Mr. President, that, that's, that's the same conversation that the, uh, prison had at, at the, at the luncheon we had. And you say they paying so much more across the river, they come get their training out there in six months to a year, bam, they gone across the river. So ain't no difference between, uh, being a jailer, if you get that training you need for six months to a year, and you know you can go make almost ten dollar more an hour, what you gonna do? You gone. And, and one thing, one thing we got to realize, we, we got, uh, uh, a different generation of people coming. And, uh, they not thinking about twenty five years down the road, they in the right now mode, they want their money right now. They ain't thinking about, well, they got good benefits and good insurance, and I can be on this job for twenty five years and get retired. Nah, they want their money right now. So if you not paying a, 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 a living wage, we gonna continue to have the same problem.
The, the first question we always ask is, are you looking to make a career or are you looking for a job? And ninety percent of the time, that's I'm looking for a job. That means we're not gonna keep them. That's not gonna be somebody that's gonna retire from the church.
Right.
That's the, uh, that's the only thing I had on us board, has any other questions?
I do have something.
Yes, sir.
Progress on Nola County.
Oh, oh, oh. Do we carry that? All in favor?
I.
All opposed? I have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Progress on Nola County.
Uh, we, we, they were waiting on the county to receive payment. As soon as they received payment, they were gonna, they were gonna. The, the cameras are, are being built. They know the payment is coming, so they have requested the parts to go ahead and build the camera. But they're not going to actually schedule the installation until they receive.
So I, I signed out and invoiced, submitted to, to Genade. So it should, the payment should be on the next chapter.
Okay.
Uh, we can reach out for the next board meeting, and I'll, I'll have an expert for us what day now that we know the payments, checks in the mail.
Try and meet on it.
It will be.
It will be, it's fine. So I would appreciate it if you follow up with that, with it, uh, see what they say. And I mean, if it's something, you get a clear answer before the next board meeting, you know what I'm saying, you give me a call. I think everybody got my number, and I give you a call, give you a call or something. We just trying to make sure, I think the board is pretty much everybody on the same accord that we really need to know the camera. Because it's getting hot, I mean, I don't have to tell y'all, y'all the sheriff department, more stuff, more activities starting to happen, people starting to gather more. And y'all know how it was the last couple summers on, so whatever we can do to deter that, because you know, it's hard. Y'all see it every day to walk up over somebody, no matter how bad a child is or how good he is, somebody love it. And that's their family. And then also with the things that we got trying to, uh, bring progress to Natchez with businesses and industries and stuff like that, every time something happened, I see it over and over again. There's not one community that goes down as a murder for Adams County, as our whole murder rate rises. So they deter companies, uh, people coming for schools, you got that disturb, it deter a lot of people. So if anything we can do as a board to protect Natchez and Adams County, I think that's what, well, I'm gonna speak, that's what I wanna do, and I feel like that's what I just wanna do.
Yes, sir. We have, we have a room set up already to monitor, uh, Adam at the old I P building. So that room's already set up, we're just waiting for.
But I think, don't, don't know, also, mons, they also monitor twenty four hours a day, also.
Yes, sir. We, we, we will also be able to go and pull video.
And monitor also. Okay, I think, beautiful.
Mr. Dollar, you have something?
Yeah, I have one thing. I just wanna say thank y'all for the help on Robin's Lake with, uh, what problems we were having. I don't know where we are on the update of that, but, um, Mr. Middleton and myself, and, uh, you know, we do appreciate it a lot. I think supervisors, the rest of the supervisors, uh, did want what was going on with the siphon pipes and things. Uh, so I hope you got that problem addressed.
Whatever we can do to help, yes. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Um, any other department on board? We'll come to talk. Supervisor Gray.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, uh, uh, Ms. Brandon, can you hear me? Is she on?
Yes, sir.
Uh, where are we with the scholarships? Do you have anybody that haven't, uh, paid their money, where I can send them something, let them know we need their money?
Yes, we, we have a number of.
But could you send me a list of them, please?
Yes, we'll be, and the application deadline has passed, and we have gotten in a couple of applications from the school as well.
Say that again?
Uh, the application deadline for the, for applying for the scholarship has passed, and we did get a number of applications from the school.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, where, uh, I haven't heard anything about redistricting, uh, uh. When, when they gonna get back with us, or when they gonna do whatever?
I'll ask for an update on it.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know, Robbie, like, this, this wasn't for you, uh, uh, your people, but I'm, I'm gonna say it down. People that we hired for this county, and if we want them to be effective on their job, make sure we need to get the proper training for all our employees that we hired for this county. And I think everybody, uh, knows it.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir. Please.
If I could find it in my budget, could he go to the coach for the first year training, just to get some knowledge?
That's gonna have them better do his job.
I mean, I think we will, we'll talk about the laws, and we'll talk about.
I would got the man.
Assistant road managers do come with the road manager, make all the classes.
I would recommend that.
If I could find it in my budget, and I think I can somewhere.
We have to mandate it, we will.
You go ahead and get that forward.
You heard the request? Motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
No.
All opposed? I have.
Thank you.
Uh, and another thing, I know all of us now are aware that the, uh, Magnolia has sold the casino, and, uh, I don't know exactly. I know about it, but I don't know them individual. I guess when they come meet with the city, um, uh, we'll find out a little more about who purchased Magnolia Casino. Uh, Scott, where are we with the, uh, mental health? I know we submitted a plan, and, uh, have we heard anything back about mental health?
I've heard anything back on them, um, the lobbyists are trying to get a meeting together in May. We're trying to spitfire our, uh, you know, what's gonna be on our legislative agenda. And that was one of the things that's possible that y'all might want to try to get, get done, get lobbied for.
For mental health, a, a, a program that we put in place, changes.
The program that, that, that we, we suggested, it would need a cash flow from the state to get it started, once it started.
They have so much money for mental health, it's pure. I mean, they got money, so, uh, we need to submit some to our delegation.
That, that's what, that's one of the things that I, I might want, y'all might wanna do.
Uh, I think it'd be a good idea, uh, if we gonna break it down the way you suggested, then they need to know what we doing. Everybody need to know what everybody doing, so you think we need to submit something to them immediately? Where they can be on the same page we are?
If it's up to the board, that would be great.
So.
Good motion by supervisor Gray, can you say? Second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
All opposed? I have. And, uh, next, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna even bring this up, but, uh, Angie, uh, how's everything going with Core Civic?
What you mean?
For, uh, they getting more employees or less, I mean, more people in the facility or less, or it's about the same?
They did a modification where they increased the pay rates of the employees in Core Civic. They didn't do a overay on the count.
Okay, uh, Scott, uh, I'm gonna wait till after the board meeting, but I'm looking at my, uh, Transportation Committee meeting that I'm a part of on the national level, and they, and they mentioned something about the Davis Bacon Act. So I'm gonna need you to help me a little bit and bring me up to speed. I know I'm a good, but, uh, sometime I, you can tell me on this something and help me out real fast on the Davis Bacon Act. And, uh, my sympathy goes out to the Hill family, the Rogers, family, the Knight, family, the Johnson, family, the Thomas, family, and the Williams family. And, uh, where, where are we? Because I know you rubbing your folks up to death on that comptroller there.
Councilor Seaver? Hmm? Controll.
Controll.
Yeah, we need to call.
So you asking me what?
What, what you have, what we have rehearsed about?
I, I'm gonna readvertise.
Well, we, well, well, what happened with the other candidate? You just decided not to choose?
Who's one of the ones that.
We had one, that's what I'm asking. We had one, nobody did anything, see anything, so do that mean we gonna readvertise? We gonna give her opportunity or what? We need to make a move on what. That's what I'm saying, we can't, because at the end of the day, I say this, you know, something happened, I've seen it happen since I've been on this board. Uh, they, they, uh, administrator been called in because it said something had been a little late, and something had been a several thing, couple things we look at. But we cannot continue, and, and, well, I'm always saying this, give people what they need. How can we expect people to do two or three jobs and then gonna be successful at one? So I mean, I'm saying not just to the board, but I'm saying to her also. I mean, you got a job that's a really important job, and you shouldn't have to continue. I understand getting us out of buying. You shouldn't be comfortable with doing two to three jobs, because that's not your job description. Because if something happens, I can guarantee you'll be here alive for the mistakes that you making your job. So don't get comfortable doing other folks' jobs also. I mean, I'm just gonna put it straight out like it is, need to be put out. You need to make sure, uh, readvertise a job. If they weren't satisfied with the candidate, open it up so we can get our counter back for the staff like it need to be. Scott, let me ask you a question while we talking about this, and our county administrator doing all these different jobs, and doing this and doing that. So you need to tell me that, uh, she can't be compensated for doing all these different jobs?
She definitely can be compensated for the work that she does. She can't be retroactively paid for, for what she has done in the past, but she can be compensated moving forward.
Well, you don't wanna put all that on her either.
We don't. Well, we did.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We need, well, we had, we had a candidate in here. I asked last time, what are we gonna, one time before, what are we gonna do about that candidate? No one said anything. So we either need to readvertise, because you put all that on Angie, like you just said. Some come up, she not gonna be affected on all those jobs. There's no way. She's gonna be able to do county administrator job, comptroller job, and try to oversee others that she's already doing. So what you need to do is you need to readvertise so that someone else can come in here and help her out.
Yeah. I knew one. I know, I know that we readvertise. We.
Good motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion?
Uh, I wanna know what Angie's take is, is on this. Angie's the one doing all that work?
Yeah, but you can still have to readvertise.
Now, my question is, um, Angie's doing both jobs, been doing it for how long?
None since she had money come up.
How long have you been doing it, Angie?
Since December.
Since December. Um, that ain't wait.
It's not like they have to do all that. It's not like they got to do all the jobs.
Two weeks, yeah, out of time, the two weeks is few as she will know.
Two weeks is good.
I'm just wondering how we can go four months without a, a comptroller, and Angie's doing all the work.
All the work.
Angie, no, you're not gonna let me finish here, because, you know, I, I run a bunch of businesses. And, and if somebody's able to do a job, and they, they're perfectly willing to do it, and she can do it, and we, we end up having to pay her more money, why, why do we need a comptroller? Because how has she done it for four months? I have not once heard her complaining about it.
She has not complained about it, but you don't know how.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking a question.
You don't know what's gonna be lacking later.
She been offended four months, and I'm not saying that she.
I'm just saying that she's a question, and I'm asking Angie a question.
Doing it, but you don't know if something probably come up later about this has not been done.
But see, this is the question that I always have, and this what happened. Now, see, when that money come up, everybody gonna have all these questions, and why is that? I can't, and see, this is why, this is what just touched me at. Why do folks, and I'm not just talking about her position. Why do folks, I've been in the county, I've been in the road department, I mean, it was, I've been fighting for the folks in the road department. You know, I brought it up about Mr. Hayes coming in, other people. Why do folks at Adams County do, uh, do two or three jobs and not be compensated for it? And the problem starts when, as long as they working and working out, if you hire for, uh, a grass cutter. But if you can operate a tractor, you operate a track hoe, you operate equipment, no problem, you can operate it for a year. But as long as you operate it for a year, y'all getting the fourteen dollars, fourteen fifty dollars, all right? Okay, no difference. And I'm, so I'm not picking anybody, I don't wanna think it's directed at nobody. I'm looking at a county wide hole, you got all over, you got people, I mean, I heard stuff in the sheriff department, you got people doing two or three. Deputies got to come in, fill in for jailers. Uh, you got this, as a county administrator, one of the most important, she's been put in doing two or three jobs and not just her, it's been all over the county. Why is it okay for other people to do two or three jobs and not be compensated for it? And I just don't understand that. And it's something that we gotta do as a board. Don't sit back and wait till somebody asks for money, and then everybody figure out a solution. We need to do a solution. I'm just like, uh, what supervisor Wilson said, regardless if we hire somebody, as long as she doing that job, she need to be compensated for it. And that's not just her, that's for any other department out there, because she doing it, and she hadn't had any complaints. But now, we don't know what happened in the future, but for four months. But now, we don't know what happened in the future, but for four months, she hadn't had it. And I just feel like, ain't nothing wrong with hiring somebody, but if you gonna put somebody on a job to do two or three job, you saving money, cause you budget for to pay somebody. So, I don't need to talk about it, ain't no money, and you budget to pay them, if you gonna put them in there, you pay them, and I give it forward.
And I, I agree with you. If they gonna maintain that job, they should be compensated. I agree, but if you gonna hire someone, uh, in a, you compensate them for, for that position that they're doing at this point, but what you gonna do, take it back from them, once you hire somebody?
That's come, that's common, that's natural, because you're not doing two jobs anymore.
Well, why wouldn't you, why don't you just go on and hire someone?
Well, I'm not saying I hire somebody, but, okay, the same question here, where if you ain't gonna hire nobody, you're taking back from them. So, why not do it for four months and not pay them? That's my question.
Well, he's already said he can't retroactively.
That was our fault.
I'm not saying, no, it's our fault, well.
No, that was our fault, cause we set on this position, that was our fault. We had a candidate here that I questioned many times, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna hire this candidate? Who won't qualify? She was qualified.
Okay, well, why would we reopen? If, if, if she was qualified, why do we have to reopen?
Because nobody wanted to vote for.
No, who, who said, when a vote's gonna come out?
I questioned you. I questioned you.
Did you hear the vote?
I wondered, no.
Okay.
And it didn't, nobody, it didn't happen. Nothing happened, we just said, what are we gonna do? That was the next thing, what are we gonna do?
Can I get Angie to answer my question?
Yeah.
Yeah, go get Angie.
Angie.
I, I, I was just gonna say this, Angie. I believe in. I'm gonna do what I have to do, cause I've had people to come to me more than once, while you doing it. Whatever I have to do to keep this county functional, that's what I do. If I have to take a pill or sleep up here, that's what I'm going to do.
Well, my next question to you was, how much time do you spend on the comptroller's job a week?
I don't spend, I came from that position.
Right, so you, you know it.
Right, it's just, it's, it's natural. That position is a natural thing for me. Now, I spend more time over there in the accounts receivable position, that I just hired somebody and I'm training. So, I wanna be over there like talking about, because accounts receivable, I would have to go over there in the morning, do the deposits, and then come back later on with the bank information and post the receipts. So, I spend more time over there in the position that I'm feeling than I would as far as the comptroller position. A lot of stuff with the, with the comptroller position, I never, it was never taken away from me anyway, I was doing it anyway.
Okay, I just wanna be able to see you, when you're talking.
Okay, but. It followed me up here anyway.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
I, I did, so this is, this is where I'm going with this. You're doing the job, whether we have a comptroller or not, you're not comfortable with the candidates that apply, so you, so we haven't hired anybody, so you're still doing the job. Scott, is it, is it wrong for me to think that she could do both jobs and get compensated? Uh, this is where the county's gone down rabbit holes for years and years and years. And I've tried to bring that before the board in the past. You wanna hire an assistant for an assistant for an assistant, whatever, you keep hiring people that you don't need. They're working part-time, getting full-time money. Now, when Angie was a comptroller, she's probably one of the best we ever had. That's why she's in the position she's in now. If she's willing to do both jobs, Scott, can she do it?
Uh, Scott.
And is it, is it done in other counties?
Yeah, I'm gonna help y'all, but y'all took our running with this and then let me think, but yes, it is. Uh, some county administrators, our comptrollers and other counties. And, uh, my only concern is this, the only way our co- uh, county administrator could be a comptroller and be successful is because that's where she came from. But if you had a county administrator that wasn't, that wasn't a comptroller, they'll have to figure out a lot of stuff that she already know, because she already had the job. Now, my thing is this, uh, we talking about it four months later, but I've been brought this up about compensating her for the job three months ago. There ain't nobody never say nothing about it, I brought it up then. Now, we saying we can't go back and compensate somebody for doing a job, from doing two jobs. So, I don't have a problem with her doing both jobs, if she feel comfortable that she can do both jobs and we as a board come together and come up with a salary to pay her to do both jobs, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I wanna, I, well, I wanna ask her, if, if she is willing to do that, if we, can we do that, Scott?
Are you willing to do that, Angie? You willing to do both jobs? Okay.
So.
Then how much did the, how much did the comptroller make, or what did we advertise for?
Give her what, Angie?
Give her five.
Give her five.
So, if we got somebody that can do the job and knows it better, she doesn't have to train anybody, cause she would be it. And we came up with a salary that she would be happy. No, 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 that's kinda how you do that. Sound of benefit, but you, you certainly can give her maybe half of that. Or that, you, I don't, I don't know this, this is not my expertise, I'm just.
It would save the county, if you got, I landed that job and she didn't, you know, I'm not saying this is the way to do it, but it, it cost the county nothing to get rid of that job all the way together, it saved the county approximately seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Angie, what is your salary?
What, what, what we gonna, we need to look at.
Eight-four?
What we need to look at is, 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 uh, this is my opinion. What we need to look at is if we gonna do it like this, don't get rid of the job, just say, uh, hire her as an employee. Okay, maybe, because I, I, and, and see how they work. If it work, then we can leave it like that, but if it don't work, I don't wanna burn her out from doing two jobs, but she been doing it four months anyway, so.
What's gonna happen during budget season and stuff like that?
Not, not that, this is what she gonna have to ask, okay? When Angie decides that she got to go to general camaraderie with us, or go on vacation, or go wherever she got to go.
That's right.
Then, I know that office can function, cause they gonna be calling you all the time. Would, would that be a problem by them not having, uh, somebody in place down there, or you don't think it'll be a problem?
It's not a problem. I, I, um, went to Colorado once and did I not handle business while I was in Colorado? I got worked off, okay.
So, what we here to do as a board, come up with some numbers?
Let me actually just say, Angie, now, now, let me just ask you this, are you gonna be okay? I know how tedious budget is, when it come to other time, are you gonna be?
I have to do.
Now, them deals are right there. Oh, during budget time.
Right, but there's a step that you, that the comptroller has to do prior, because to be honest with you, I can't move forward until something is done in that position. There are different sessions that the comptroller has to do. And I had to do it. I think I could move to my step, because I can't move to my step until they do what they need to do. Right, so I had to do it, because they, they were new, they didn't know.
Yeah.
And you, you, you want, you want the position?
I can do it, okay, that's all, that's all we need to do.
I know, one thing about Angie, she gonna, she gonna tell you what she thinks. And, and I appreciate that about you, Angie, I always have, since the day you were sitting in that chair applying for that job, so.
So, the day of.
So, do we make a motion?
Oh, oh, oh.
I know, but just to, to, to look into this.
Before you do that, it's legal, I already looked into it, but I'm saying, I'm saying this, four weeks, four weeks, uh, do that, we need to come up with a salary and consent to her, make sure that she is real comfortable with, cause I don't wanna submit nothing to somebody and they like buy it.
We didn't do that executive session?
No.
Or, or we gonna, or talk about it?
We can do it open, cause I think it's a job, but.
Raising it, executives, we can't get her raising executive session.
Well, I mean, just talk about it.
Yeah, but why don't we just take this off, let, let, let's take everything on that vibe, we know, lay it on the table. We know what we, and she know, why don't we get some more, a little bit more, so let that soak in where we at before we just make a motion?
The problem with that is, if you kick me down the road.
No, we gonna kick it to the next me.
She, she's still doing the same job and not being compensated.
If we do, we need to do it now.
Exactly.
I mean, she been doing it for four months, now we gonna kick it for two more weeks?
I agree, I agree with you.
If we gonna do it, we already know what she can do, we gonna need to figure out how much we gonna pay her and do it.
That's okay.
I don't.
What are you comfortable with?
I need to make sure that's salary right, because we don't wanna come here.
What are you comfortable with? Cause I don't wanna come back and say, I shouldn't have did this, what are you comfortable with?
This is my opinion, this is how I feel. I, I am going to be comfortable with whatever you all agree with.
No.
Listen to me.
Well, 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 that's.
This, this depends. I like to see growth, in other words, I don't want to start me off at a maximum, stuck there. I like to see, like, next year, she doing a better job, just give a little more, you know? So, start at the bottom.
You already do the job.
You understand what I'm saying, start at the bottom and make me feel good next year, or the year after, whatever, and say, I think you're doing a great job, just give a little more, but start me at the, at the minimum. This is my, this is my opinion.
Can I say this? I want, I want you to understand, I want something, with what you doing, you got a good idea, but you need to understand this. What you don't get this now, if election year come and you got other supervisors here that goes out the door.
I understand that.
Okay, so as long as you understand.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I, I'll tell you what.
I'm still eat, I'm still gonna eat. Regardless of.
If, if other supervisors come in there and they don't realize the value that she, she brings to this county, and they're not, they probably shouldn't got elected.
I don't know, man.
Yeah, I just asked.
Well, I mean, we've been doing this.
We gotta do, we gotta do.
Yeah, I mean, y'all give people, yeah, we agree.
See, you just have to room with you.
I, I'm, I heard, I heard, but I still don't.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion.
Make the motion.
I hope she satisfied with the motion. I make a motion that she makes a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Say, how much go on that?
Hold on, hold on, we got a motion by supervisor, motion saying my supervisor's grave, any discussion?
Discussion, okay, how much, on a fifty-five thousand dollar job that you take, how mu- how much money is that added to it?
She makes eighty-four.
She makes eighty-four.
Eighty-four, so.
So, what she said when you probably wasn't in here, that she wanted to start at the bottom and leave it room for growth.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, well, we, we actually made a motion to readvertise for the comptroller position.
We were saying that?
Drop?
Yes.
I was, I was saying, man.
Are you okay with that?
So, now we're in discussion.
Whatever.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I say.
Okay, last on my report is, uh, I think I'm gonna make a copy of this USDA, uh, deal I got from the last conference we went there, and it got a lot of information about grants and maybe I need to give Southwest Planet a copy of this. And once we look at it and figure out, uh, if anything on here that we can tie into what we doing and then we give them the opportunity to be able to try to, uh, submit some to one of these grants. Uh, is this the new insurance? I mean, dental insurance, okay, so we going to standard, I got my card.
I just, this temporary, I put each one in the tray, in your tray.
So, this out. So, when I go to them Monday, I'll give them this.
You're gonna get another one in the mail, but that's just your temporary.
Okay, I'm gonna give them this, alright, so that concludes, no, 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 my last thing is, I do have to go to this conference tomorrow, and since I'm not gonna be in town on which supervisor Daniel, happy birthday, uh, on the twentieth. And that concludes my report.
Happy birthday, Senator.
Four-nine.
Supervisor's grave.
Oh, hold up, and one more thing, uh, and I know this is her last meeting, and I wanna say thank you for your twenty, thirty-eight years of, I mean, twenty-five years of service, how many years?
I think it's close to twenty-six.
Twenty-six of service to Adams County.
So, you're only forty-six?
And, and, uh.
I'm fifty-four years old.
Thank you, you ended that, you know that.
At least that age, and you just put it out there. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Senator. Um, that's the same thing I like to say to, you know, I work with you ever since you been here. So, you know, I've been on you for those twenty-five years, and you done a great job. We gonna miss you, but you was good at your job, and I would like to shout you out, yeah, you were.
That's right, she a smile war, she so unhappy.
She smiled and now that she live. She got a smile all over.
I, I, I've never seen such a smile like that, you know? I wish you'd have had that smile during the twenty-five years, but I didn't have that smile. Yeah, but you always have, you always gonna do your part, I have to say. Uh, another thing is, uh, I need to get a poll of us, to partner with the city on this COVID, um, they getting shots again, um, May the twenty-first, and we COVID, we are partnering with them last time, and they would like us to partner with them again.
You had that motion for that?
Yeah. Do you mean the motion?
You didn't motion for the pardon of them?
Probably not.
He just, he just, oh, no.
Yeah, they got those shots, those shots, and the booster shots. We don't have one with it, but we are, and we will go with that. Okay, next thing, uh, city road, uh, it's in such a bad shape, uh, handling also. I would like to, I think that's a Ford gone, I did talk to him about this, maybe, uh, submit that road, uh, to state to see if we can, uh, get it paid.
If we do that, and I'd like to see, uh, Kingston add that list too, cause we have to do our exact same data roads, they're in the same, exact shape. Those, the shoulders are terrible, the road is flipped.
But let me say this too, I'm gonna say this about, about that, you know, I didn't understand, you talking about a year out, um, and a possibility of a grant, I don't mean you talk, I do not have no idea, you talking about a year out on these roads for an answer to it. And, um, and then that's a guess, but I'm a guarantee, so I, I mean, I want all of them to be done, but you know, we got some terrible roads, so we, I think we need to redo that page on there.
Yeah.
On what, on the bridge?
This is why I brought this to the board.
Yeah, let me say this, um, supervisor, we are, that we have a bond that's out there that's gonna be for infrastructure anyway. Maybe we could pay those roads in your infrastructure with that bond.
You know?
Cause I mean, that's what I could do, so, you know, cause, cause those roads is not as expensive as some of these roads that we talking, we talking, these are million dollar roads. The Jerrys is not million dollar roads.
But what I'm saying, I don't wanna be waiting on a gamble or guarantee, that just ain't quite straight for me.
And that's why I say, that's why you pay those roads.
But I mean, now, you, you, you ain't talking about the, the money that we talking about with doing the, uh, uh, issue with, uh.
Recreation.
Recreation.
Yeah.
I, 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 I don't know, cause I got something else we got to do later today, we come to the recreation also, so, uh, with this recreation grant. Because you know what I'm saying, we said all that tech together, and I mean, I want everything done for this, but I'm not gonna let it buy me out of my bone. But I, I mean, you know, I fight for all this to be done fair, everything else, and for operating what we got and for how it's gonna be there, I'm gonna ensure something.
I can't say I'm gonna ensure, because, talking about recreation or what?
Yeah.
How you gonna ensure, and you got two parks, and we only have one.
Well, you got, you got twenty years, and none have been done, and each other park has always had some improvement since I've been here. Yes, no, no, I'm, right, as I've been here, every park's been done, uh, I mean, I've been out there with the.
Every, every block got a new facility, but Robo.
And, and, and that didn't even no time, I exist, so, I mean, it's been here, it, it, no, you saying two parks, but I want you to understand something. I really did that for the good of all the last time, I don't have any parks, I don't have any roads, I don't have any bridges. Maybe we need to understand, I left it at home, but maybe I need to open that constitution back up. Roads, bridges, parks, and everything else that they done on a countywide basis. Even though they are in our districts, we should do them on a countywide basis, because you see it all the time. I know I fight them, and you say, well, we have constituents. I know I fight them on, you say, well, we have constituents in, in our, uh, districts too. And that's the thing I brought to the table, I don't wanna let anybody district, I don't wanna let Mr. Gray district, I don't wanna let yours, Mr. Wilson, or Mr. Nelson. What I wanna do is make sure that we work together as a board to fix everybody in good condition, because you got, just like the people in your district, I mean, they just in form of the people in West District and Kevin. We all trying to make it better, I, I sort of trying to make it better for Adams County. You know, we had an incident that I gonna bring up, and that's why I was fighting for, we was talking about Bravo Park. Have constituent power.
I think we was on city roads, now I was talking about parks.
Oh, okay, well, don't even operate that right for, but that's gonna leave the road out there, we gonna, we gonna cut it. We gonna cut it out, but no, I don't think we're gonna, I didn't say.
You said something about doing state aid project on.
Yes, you road is a state road.
Well, here go the catch with that, here go the catch with that. Now, this, this is your report, but here, here, here go my thing with that. We all have roads we need to take care of. Right now, the number one thing is finishing marketing town. And if we don't, the worst case scenario, if we don't get the money from the legislature, if we don't get the money from nowhere else, we have to come up with two point, how many, or?
Three million.
Two point three million dollars. So, this is why I, 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 I brought this to everybody's attention right here. You need to look at this paper. Now, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, we had nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars with, with this money. Two thousand and twenty-three, we got one point two million, forty-five, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Now, Ricky, where does this money come from?
This is used tax money.
Used tax, okay.
Yeah, used tax money.
Use taxes different from state aid.
The only thing I'm saying is this. We need to finish our one project and put the other ones on the wish list. And if we don't do it like that, we gonna get in trouble, because if we can't find the money to finish our marketing town road, that's a state aid project, y'all. That's state aid project.
Uh, that's state.
We ain't got no money from state aid to do the project. This money we got from earmark from the federal government. So if we gonna state aid something, we need state aid marketing town. Cause that's what, that's who lost the money from the start. Marketing town road.
But that's what you need to bring, you, you should have, you should have suggested that, we use state aid money for marketing town.
Well.
Well, we got roads that are pretty bad there.
I understand what you're saying, this is what I'm saying, I, I don't have, everybody got one. I don't see a piece of the pie, but right now, the only thing I'm saying is, marketing town lost state aid funding because of the people out there decided they wanted to take us to court, and we lost the funding. We got a two point four million dollar earmark from the federal government, we ain't got nothing from our state government. Anything with state aid right now need to go toward the two point four million dollars that the engineers just sit up there and say we need. But we don't need all of it, no.
But we can still ask for it.
They don't get the winner was brought up, it's probably not.
But we still can ask for those projects too, really, even though marketing town is out there. This money is sitting there, you could have said, either one of you owe, let's use the state aid money for marketing town.
It was automatic. It ain't.
No, nobody's, nobody mentioned state.
Robert, Robert, we been talking about state aid money for marketing town, what we, what we, we be talking about? I don't mean to put you in this, but what we been talking about?
Talking about, that what I say, I just can't see how much money is this state aid for right now too, though we got any.
Yeah, we have some, we have money sitting.
What I'm trying to find out too, and like you said, it was. I mean, nine hundred.
Yeah, we run down.
It was nine hundred thousand dollars.
I got how much state aid money sitting?
I had, I got run down, I guess, yes, sir, Chris Dixon came in and told us, it was one point eight.
No, it's one, it's, it was one point five million.
It was one point eight, unless you use some, cause when Chris Dixon came here, the last time, we did, uh, we used it on the strike, and we used it on a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred.
That's, that, uh, that's coming from y'all, that's approved.
Yes, but two hundred and ninety thousand?
For striking, yeah, so that's what I was saying, state aid money.
Okay, and that's the thing here. Not saying that I'm fighting against your road, but it making, uh, if we gonna state aid money, why do we go, we spend everything, we have, we started one project, and then, you know, like Gray said, supervisor Gray said, well, if you, where we gonna get the money from? If y'all wanna come back to the table and give, do another bond mission, that's fine, we can get it, but.
You're just saying we gonna do another bond mission, in a statement earlier, when we talked about marketing town.
What, that what I just said?
Mm-hmm.
I'm talking about the bond, no, I didn't say nothing about the bond, I'm talking about the recreation bond that we talking about.
That you say, when marketing town was brought up, you said we might have to do, do a bond to finish, to get this rest of this money for marketing town.
Like you said, we was talking about, well, let me, let me correct you, if you misunderstood, I mean, we was talking about the recreation bond, that we was talking about fixing the parks in the road that was gonna be mined after, and we talking about the recreation bond, am I correct?
We gonna use the bond now.
No, we don't talk about one of that, but the recreation bond that we brought up about doing the roads, cause we supposed to be fixing the park, and the rest of it's a payment. And that, I'm not misunderstanding that.
Yeah, that is, that is correct.
Everybody pick roads that they're, they're gonna pay in the district.
Yeah, okay.
Well, western side of joint road.
Uh, we all have roads.
And the one chance, I, I'm gonna step out, I'm gonna do what I was talking about.
I'm gonna do like, like the lawyer did, I'm gonna step out on this, how we picking these roads, cause somebody gonna go jail or a unit system.
There's roads, there's four-year road plan, so roads out there for everybody.
That's what we all know about, four-year road plan, right there.
You be picking them all, so that's B two.
There's a road that every supervisor has to submit in January to the road manager. There's a four-year road plan that he goes by, that every district get roads paved. That's how that works.
Well, this is the thing, from my understanding.
Just for one year ago, that does that four-year road plan.
Can we let, let's let her finish her reporting?
Yeah, I agree.
If you're, uh, uh.
You can have a finish, I'll take it up and I get straight.
On, on that, I mean, I don't know.
Well, you know, I'm gonna take it up on my, and get it straight, that'll finish.
Oh, give it a roll for, oh, stay.
My discretion was, I wanted to add, uh, Kingston Road to, to that same deal.
Well, in this state aid report that we just got, there was some striking that, that I need to get done, and I.
Maybe, I tell you what, maybe we'll drop that motion, because let's do striking, that's okay to strike it first, because there is, um, applications out there for striking, striking, and you haven't submitted Jerus, have you submitted that yet? Okay, so there is some out there for striking.
You gonna have people that are dead, so you gonna set it wrong.
I was saying, I'll.
Robert, is there any plans to strike Kingston Road or?
Well, you know, we had mentioned Kingston Road was some work that needs to be done before we, uh, you know, and to try to, like I said, it's a concrete road, you know, to try to do some overlay on it, but as Mr. Dixon spoke in here that day, we had that meeting, that he would love to come back and talk to the board, to get us on the right plan of what we do, or how much money per year as he comes, it looks to be broke, I mean, you know, how much striking might I put all in one year, I just can't afford to do it that way. We go, you know, as you say, whatever roads or whatever areas, it might be a mile here, two miles here, ten miles here. But that's what, and I think we need to get him in here, I think that would help resolve some of.
Yeah, yeah, please.
We just said.
I see that, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's a thing to, please hear that here. All right, you need, you need, we did that, we did that. So, uh, water and sewage, I gave Scott, I don't know, uh, from Adams County Water, uh, that, there's a project that needs to be done, and it's for deal with water and sewage, and so, do you feel? Uh, have you get anything on that yet?
I mean, we talked about it, and I think we can make legal for something that the board wants.
Yeah, that's just the, that's just that was the board what we talking about doing, so, they would know from when they get these kind of projects, and they have to go through either water or utility, or.
Could be anywhere from Moore Town, you know, Eagle Water, Royal Water, to, uh, Ryanhead Water Association, Out of County Water Association, many of those are going to look at, uh, issue, um, on your figure, from Wilkes and Road out, it's residence there that's on the way of water and, uh, things and city, and, you know, problems that we was talking, just, I get too much, whatever in well, and while they're trying to get out of county water out there, and they, and the out of county water, out of county water, it's a middle of a college system, or a little college to get water in front of their residents, and they have to pay a meter cost, and then get it to the house, but once they set a meter from the meter to your house, and off to the resident. And they give them a call to that, a little back off, Mr. Slower, uh, about it, to see if we can use some, uh, some money within the county to. Yeah, and, and what happened was, and what Mr. Slower come up with, I'm not even sure, I can say, is like, take couple hundred thousand dollars, put it in the state account, and then you gonna get reimbursed. If it can set up the way it is, it would be like on a, if it's legal, he said he thought it'd be legal. It's a, each resident needs five thousand dollars to, to get water to their house, you know, what out of county is gonna charge. Well, then, give out of county the money to upgrade the system, but have it in their system, and repay the county within a ten-year period, whatever, to add to the people's water, be able to, to upgrade the system. Is that, the end result was, Mr. Slower?
That's kind of just the brainstorming, that's something that the board wants to look at, we can see, now do it.
Okay, let me tell you, the cost is twenty-nine thousand dollars, okay? Uh, Adams County is willing to put about ten thousand, eight hundred dollars in there, something like that, to, uh, help with this water system. So, the next thing is the, I think it's supposed to come out to like nineteen thousand and something that's left. And it's four residents on there, there's a lady that's getting really sick behind that, and having to see doctors and all that kind of stuff, all that. So, they asking them to pay about four thousand dollars first, you know, and they don't have the funding to pay for four thousand. And so that's about, like I say, the left is nineteen thousand dollars. What we're thinking about doing is saying, um, yeah, we can do this here, give the nineteen thousand dollars, and then ha- put it on the bill, their bill. Give Adams County that nineteen thousand dollars, then put it on the bill, where they would, if we come back to the county, they would pay a certain amount for a period of years, and it would come back to the county, and we put it in an account for anybody else like that, that needs, uh, service like that.
Supervisor Hutch. Uh, before we do end of it, let's get Southwest Planning in here, cause they talked and told us at their meeting, they got so much money to do exactly what you saying that need to be done. So let's get Southwest Planning in here and find out, uh, can they come up with a plan to help us do that, and, and they'll be Plan A. Even with Bravo, Plan A, Plan B need to be, we spent our money, but Plan A need to be, we need to try to get some of this USDA money. He say we got all these grants out there that ain't nobody utilizing. And, and they got all, let's just get them in here and find out.
And which, they supposed to be here next meeting, and, and like I told you, I did call in that in regards to all this.
What she can.
To get her in here, they gonna be here next meeting, they was not able to attend this meeting, cause they was in preparation at a meeting. But they'll be here our next meeting, but in the meantime, you know, we can get them in here and see how long it's gonna take to do this, but in the meantime, we got a person out there that's sick.
The whole Bravo almost sick.
Yeah, so we gonna have to do something, it can't get kicked down.
Ain't trying to kick you down, what I'm saying, the whole Bravo almost sick, they, they ain't had good drinking water, uh, and I don't know how long. They be buying their water, they can't drink their water. They can't, they got a land out there, probably trying to build a house, they can't even build another house because the water, uh.
So, that's right. Have this, have they come to the board, have they, along to the board, to ask us to do anything?
They set up something to use the president.
Okay. Have anybody decided they wanna do anything for them?
We waiting on, see what they gonna do with this now.
Now we waiting on, see, why is it when I bring up something?
Man, it is not like that.
It is, is why when I bring up something, then we wanna throw it about back to what you all have not done.
We trying to save the taxpayer money, trying to find all the ways to, to fund these change.
Enough, that's, that's, that's true enough.
Because when you open up a can of worms and spending the taxpayer money, when you spend over there and use the street.
That it would be coming back.
What is the number one thing that people don't pay? They don't pay for water, they ain't got, they ain't got nothing to make.
They pay for water.
They ain't got no, they ain't got nothing to play to make them pay it.
But they pay for water? Water, you have water deals.
I'm gonna tell, I'm asking you, what's wrong with the next meeting, if they didn't go to this one, why?
I'm, I'm, but I was, but I was just bringing it up, putting it out here.
Oh, that's how you do it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, my bad, I, I didn't make the motion.
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm gonna open my report.
Supervisor, that was interesting.
Was it? Good read.
Mr. Slower, uh, did you ever find out whether Adams County sanitation is picking up the trash out of the plantation park shop? Uh, for sure, because I'm getting a lot of reports, there's a lot of trash still on Kingston Road, boxes and bags and trash are coming off of vehicles, now, whether it's just people not secure them all the way to the dump out there, I'm sure y'all have the same problem. Uh, out, out, out in Morgantown, they all shit out, that people will not secure their trash in back of their trucks and on these trailers. I wanna go back to something that, uh, Mr. Gray said earlier about, we're talking about these jailers and stuff, keep the place in there, kind of. Um, and Scott, maybe you can tell me this. He said that it's twelve dollars and something, sixty cents an hour per day over there, and, and they want their money now instead of later. Which, in this Burger King world that we have, you know, everybody wants my way right away. Um, if they weren't Adams County employees, but, but contractors, the jailers, where they can make sixty-nine dollars an hour, and we don't have to pay any curers. And what have they, can, is that, is that allowed?
Yeah, the, the.
First, they have to be, they have insurance, and they have to have hurt, uh, to work in jail?
Yeah, if you, if you work for thirty hours or more as an employee, then you have to pay the curers, uh, system, and that's, that's law. And curers strictly goes after people that done, you know, come back and fall back down.
Right, I'm just, I'm just asking that question, I'm trying to figure out if they get more money. Cause they want it right now, like I said, they don't give a, they don't care about what's gonna happen, you know, when they get, like, his age.
But the, the reality is, those companies that, like for Civic, and the company across the river, I mean, they're not as good as a pension plan like Cam's got, but they still offer retirement and so forth too. And when you're off, when you're competing with a fifteen dollar an hour, with, you know, probably as good as helping there as you can, you have a retirement plan and so forth, twelve dollars an hour, she won't pay.
Well, I just know that you could actually pay that big sixteen dollars an hour, seventeen dollars an hour, if you don't, if you're not paying curers, and then the insurance, you know, they be making, spray that sixteen or seventeen dollars an hour.
Unfortunately, you can't do that.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, Angie, congratulations, and I appreciate your work. And Miss Dale, thank you for all the service, we had known each other that long, but thank you for everything, yeah. And, uh, one other thing, it's great, A. Hoffman Road, did you got that message from that man's slate?
Yeah, we know that.
Oh, okay, well, I saw it on my email, and I, and I, we all should give your district a.
Yeah, he's been out there, uh, meeting Mr. Dollar, um, John, I mean, yeah, or CS, or Green, and everybody was out there. Yeah, I was house, and Brown, where we at.
Got a whole like that.
He did, I'm out of that, that's where his house is, so I'm the one.
I figured you probably moved out of it, my, my email, I've got emails in my, in days, and all of a sudden, all stuff start popping up, and I was just trying to cover it. That, that included my report.
All right, well, I'm gonna get that into the other, I'm gonna say first, Francis, thank you for what you, uh, your services that you done, and this is our cemetery time working together, uh, and I, and I enjoyed you, for you was there, and, uh, I, and I appreciate it, and I hope you have a great retirement. And I also wanna say, uh, Mr. Dollar, thank you for your and the guy's effort in the situation yesterday, I think people over Adams County didn't realize, cause it rained someplace, and some places. It didn't, we had to have a straight line wind come through, cause we probably got, had ten trees, and, um, at least ten trees across the roadway on that end, and I appreciate that. But now, let's get back to the business. Now, cause I heard the saying, and I think Superbowl touches, I wanna clarify something, I, I, and I hear you brought it up, since you're gonna open up, let's open our way up. Now that, and I think I told you this before, like I told Kevin and Wes and Mr. Gray too, I am not personal with anything with anyone in y'all. I don't have anything personal against you, so it ain't every time you say something, but if I feel like it's not getting the fair shot, I'll say something about it, and if I'm wrong, I have no problem. I know what you said about state aid, yes, I was aware of state aid money, because we talked about it, me and Mr. Dollar and the president, we had Harry James here. But I bated in the last meeting, and this ain't just for you, this for everybody, um, some of the stuff that we do, and it's not, we don't wanna argue or make it seem like we arguing. But I brought this up before, we are in a unit system, and the road manager running, we ride the roads every year and sign an affidavit, am I correct?
That's fine, that's what I.
We signed, we signed an affidavit, and so, but, and, and that being fair, with that being said. The road manager, in a unit system, has a list of roles that we are, not just us in our district, because we ride the entire county. So, and he has a list of roles that we should do as a priority, as same as the state aid guys said. Yeah, the state, uh, state aid guy come in and do an annual report on that, and if the road manager would be able to make that decision on those roles that we have. I think it'll be fair, because when I did look over the state aid list, everybody have state aid roles in their district, everybody have that. And when we look over, we, all us pick roles that need paving and striping, am I correct?
Right, I just, Superbowl's names, I think I just re-said that, you're repeating what I said, cause I just mentioned it, you're repeating exactly what I just said.
Well, yeah, it is.
So, you don't have to preach to me, I have the knowledge of that already, you don't have to preach that to me, I've been here over thirty-five years, and I already know this.
I got you.
You don't have to preach that to me, and I just said that.
But, and, and.
You preaching that to the God.
Yeah, well, you right, but, for the other ones that do want you, I wanna say that, if we could allow the run, the road man, the unit system, to run out of the unit system. It'll eliminate a whole lot of, uh, these things, and that way, we'll be fair to everybody out over the county, and that won't be a problem. So, I think it's best for me to just yield the floor right there, and let this lay where it lay. Go ahead, Doc, see if you can.
I ain't got it, no, I got that.
I didn't, Doc, I'm not telling you anything.
We're gonna go to, uh, county attorney.
Uh, Grant couldn't make it today, and he turned in a request for payment on the E W D P project we did on M L K. I had Robbie take a look at it, and there was a little bit of a problem, but we got it corrected, uh, with the amount that we ended up spending. Um, but this work is ready to be done?
It's done, it's completed, it's finished, it's ready to be paid, it's on, uh, seven, eight, seven, eight, nine, those three sites that we combined and put together, and Mr. E D B, everybody construction did the project, this is on there. Okay, this is asking for.
So, I would get a, ask for a motion to approve this claim to let it go to the docking system, it still has to go to the docking and come up to us. Uh, it would be eight percent of the eight, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand and some odd dollars, the eight percent of that sixty-seven thousand dollars going in here.
Okay, well, I have a problem panel, but what did we just say about getting the plan and stuff that we need, just a panel right here? So, I mean, I don't have a problem approving it, but I'll make the motion to approve the pending that, the other engineer and the plan, the motor, we get the necessary documents we need.
Yeah, I, and so, what I was gonna already do, because I was gonna call bookkeeping and grab their checks and say, I got your checks, and then I'll exchange your checks for the plan.
It's ransom.
Hey, man, y'all playing games, man, you trying out for playing game, man, them people is not doing what they supposed to be doing, and it need to be said, and they need to do what they supposed to be doing. Stop coming up to them people, I'm sick and tired of them.
In this case, we're kinda holding a check for ransom, you bring us what we need, and you get your check, I mean, that's kinda what.
It's all here, guess what you talking about?
It's not on there.
Sixty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars?
And eighty cents.
It ain't the same, it's not here?
It's all on there.
It's all on there.
It's all, it's all. So, we, we wanna pay a firm that can't even come to the meeting.
Okay.
I ain't talk, you, you, you chose to do that.
I didn't choose to do that.
No, 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 give his report, that's what I'm talking about, you say, oh, okay, you giving his report. We paying them for to get their own report, I ain't, I ain't talking about you, Scott, don't you look like that.
I'm not looking, I, I don't.
Yeah, stop, stop.
I don't, you know, believe me, believe me, I don't wanna pay them anything, and I'm not playing games, I'm saying.
Hey, are you listening, they playing games, and they been playing for a long time, and it's time off for playing games, man, we gotta move this county forward.
I understand.
That's all I'm saying, now.
What, you're backing them up, I'm sorry.
I ain't say you was backing them up, you gotta listen, so if you wanna hold their check. To get what we need from them, that is a problem. Or one, two, rather, that's a problem, cause we shouldn't have to do that, so you hold this check this time, when we need more information, we gonna continue to hold their checks?
That's what we had to do.
Well, what I wanna do.
Oh, God.
No, no, see, get on the cap, there's other ways to, to skin a cap, they got a bond, they got a bond, we, we need to start hitting that bond, and then we, we be having these problems.
Well, we can certainly go that route, in my mind, what's faster, getting our plans, is not filing suit on the bond, what's faster is, I got your check, and you.
Then, then you do both. Uh, we ain't even used to that, don't know, you wanna talk about that.
Well, now, we're gonna try that.
I was gonna say, can we, we need to rescind that motion, cause this is already been approved.
Yeah, that is, we've rescinded, yeah, it is.
He voted again.
But he's gonna go get the check, and he's gonna call and tell them.
We're gonna do something else.
I ain't voted against it.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
I had to serve, but I ain't voted against.
No.
And then, there are a couple items to be determined. You know, I'm done. Uh, Brandy, you're up.
I got a question for you too, Mr. Gray.
They bond approved, and we have. Sandra Thatcher, Dee Data, Robert Bradford, Collette McNeil, and Mary Kay Dory.
You heard the question, second by Superbowl gangs, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed, eyes out.
Uh, we also have the large tax conditions, so that's a G for alternate, please.
You heard the question, question by Superbowl gangs, second by Superbowl Wilson, any discussion, all in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
And the last thing I have, um, the board, they just submit the four objections we received to the Hennepin Park Act. We did submit those to the Department of Revenue, and they warned it back, um, denial of the year, and so, uh, generally, you know, the, the board's project, the general board is filed along with the Department of Revenue. All of, uh, persons had not filed, or had not, um, handled their state income tax statements, or before they were in first, and that was the reason they were denied for a second time. And the board refused to, to decide to turn it on, and then take, take a motion and, and filed along with the Department of Revenue.
Heard the question, change your vote. Superbowl. The motion by Superbowl Wilson, can you say, second by Superbowl gangs, any discussion, all in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
Good call, thank you.
Thank you. I, I got a question, uh, Mr. Gray has a question for you.
Uh, I don't know if this, uh, uh, this brandy, uh, Mr. Slower, uh, to the board, now, hold up, hold up.
Okay.
Uh, I might, I might have missed this, but it's interfund loan to, uh, self-funded, uh, insurance. I'm noticing every docking now, we getting, uh, interfund loans, Scott, do we do them interfund loans in here, or we just do them on this paper? To transfer money from, from, from one county to another, that supposed to be done out loud?
Interfund loans, that, yeah, I mean, you, you gotta do it on the minutes, have we not been doing?
I'm asking, cause I can't remember.
Interfund loans been on the minute, on the, on the docket?
But it's not on the minute.
They in the minute, are they in the minutes, they should be in the minutes.
I thought we recorded the, we got a docket that references the minutes, is that?
Oh, 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 let me, let me ask my question again, this is part of the docket, it says seventeen thousand dollars interfund loan to self-funded health insurance. I can't recall us making a motion, or doing whatever, to make this part of the minutes, now, it's part of the docket. But I'm asking, do it need to be part of the minutes, cause we speak through our minutes, not this docket.
Yes, you get on part, part of that.
That's all I'm asking.
Do I know what it is?
Go ahead.
Well, what normally happens, what happens, we have, uh, accounts payable, that's our source of bank account, and we have another bank account, which is called self-help insurance account. Now, the health insurance amount is paid on that account, now, when we have a lot of, what's it called, when we have overspend, because we have a lot of.
Sick people.
Sick people, ki- kind of, the money, the bank account, the health insurance is now in the negative. At that point, we get a call from the board, everybody saying we're in the negative, we have to pull money from the accounts payable account, and put it in the self-funded to cover the cost. And that's what's been have, happened, we have a lot of.
I understand that process, but I'm asking you, if you do a minute, somebody need to bring it to us, and somebody need to make a motion, but is I'm not, is, is that not correct?
Anything on the minutes.
Yeah, so, in the, in, in the near future, when that happens.
I thought I've seen that interfund loan two minutes, so they're getting that.
No, it's in the minute.
The user's in minutes, one hour.
The only thing, something can be in the minutes, one of us got to make a motion, you just can't automatically put nothing in no minute, so. I, I can't recall motions being made with these loans, I'm just trying to keep us where we supposed to be. So, in the near future, we just need to make a mo- ain't no problem.
He's not washing interfund loans.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just questioning, chasing somebody, get the minutes, and read the minutes, and say, well, y'all been transferring interfund loans, and I, I, I don't see no way in the minutes.
Does that need to be part of Andy's report?
I don't know who reported, I hear that.
Right, all the major clerks. Or at least as I was.
Cause I mean, you know, like, back in the days, that's when we did interfund.
Yeah, cause back in the days, it used to be in the minutes, that's what I said.
So, she assisting interfund list this, after that.
Yeah.
I know, I can't remember, would you see, would you say it, and I would just watch it out in.
In the minutes, that's why I'm saying in the minutes.
So, I actually have another thing about the minutes, it's for the interfund loans, when we pay back, cause it's a few years alone, and it's going back, we took our drug funds, we, we haven't put back, cause we haven't. Been able to put it back, do they go to the minutes also, when we repay?
Yeah, we repay, and you all set, so we interfund loan, and we're closing out interfund loans, and at the end of the year, we balance out all of our interfund loans, and we'll be in the popular. All that is.
Yeah, you're right. All right, is that, just pay your year's thing?
I don't have any.
The same?
All right, well, hold on, Mr. President, so, so Scott, do I need to make a motion? Uh, let me show you one, uh, credit, right, do, do I need to make a motion starting now with this interfund loan stuff?
Yeah, that, that is the interfund line.
That's what it is, I remember taking the check.
Do a motion need to be made?
Do a motion.
Don't move, question by Superbowl Gray, can you say? Second by Superbowl Hutch, any discussion, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed, eyes out, Superbowl Wilson's got it.
Okay, I, I just have one thing, it's really not anything, I just need to make a statement or whatever, um, department reports. We have, like, based on all department heads that comes in, making a request for trial or to pursue something. Um, I know back in the days, the department heads got with the county administrator prior to the meeting, to see if they have the money available. Cause the time is, first of all, just computer people went out and go dead on, you know, just like it's nothing, internet problem or whatever, but. I think I should be aware of what they're asking for, so I can look at their budget in time, you know, because. I can pull up a budget and see what's available, that's not, it's not always, it's not accurate, because we can have a department that, uh, come in, and they may sign off on some invoices. They may have twenty invoices, less than a hundred dollars, which is two thousand dollars, it's not gonna reflect until it's paid. So, therefore, what, what that budget reflect, when you ask me whatever was available, I can't tell that, unless I do research to know what's available. You know, I think, personally, I think it's intent, you know, because I'm not prepared, and I, and I want to be prepared.
Your next question, that's it, uh, Milton, next question. I know, every department is supposed to get a cash disbursement ledger, are they still in there?
They should be getting their phone payment, so I don't have to change.
And I think that's what, every month, they supposed to get a cash disbursement ledger?
They should.
Before they even ask for purchases or anything else, they supposed to look at their cash disbursement ledger to determine how much they have in their budget.
Right, and it's like, it's there, and I'm gonna always show what's available.
Because of outstanding.
Outstanding invoices, that's not gonna be, that's not a PO.
And I.
Right, okay, so they may have twenty thousand off of one hundred dollars, right, it's, it, it's not gonna reflect.
Right, but you, can you determine?
I can determine, all the way I can determine is I have to check with accounts payable, the C book out there, invoices that's under a hundred dollars, and they have a lot of them sitting out there.
Okay.
Because.
So, they might need to send a letter out to them, asking them to continue before they ask for the travel, or in the purchases, or anything, because of these reasons.
Right, and then, and, and, uh, another note, it'll help me, at that point, I can, if it's needed, I can request a budget amendment, you know? If I had a talk with the, the department earlier, if you don't have the money, okay, that doesn't mean you cannot get it, because a budget is a budget, it's designated.
Right, things happen, I may have to increase your bu- budget with a request, you know, with the approval of the board, but I don't have anything going on.
So, it just need to be a little pullback.
And, and you need to put a time for it, yeah?
Right.
They didn't come to Monday morning for me.
Exactly, and I get a lot of emails on a Monday morning, that I don't even.
I don't even know what I asked for, so my way to that, yeah, my way to that, right, Monday beside.
That I do have?
That I have.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I, so I'm, you know, so I'm just presenting this, no?
Go ahead.
All right, uh.
The destination right off, I know we're just gonna do it in public, so I'm giving to, passing around, hey, Ron is leaving on the twentieth of this month. Uh, Scott had asked me about the lady about, uh, hours, our board met, we had recommended that we was gonna let her go, because she had overdid the hours, she come in and make say, and resign, so. Right now, as of twenty ninth, as of next week, we need to start advertising for a pool manager in our office. Right now, I asked the lady, um, Belana Jones, my what her name, uh, Toni Jones, to come in and help me, to get somebody else, so we'll start training her, if she come in next week. To run our office until we get somebody to truly run hours, and, um, I got her time, she, the board had recommended to pay, and I asked Scott, Scott said we gotta go to pay, but. I'm gonna leave it up to you all, and so I went to about hours, but I turned. but I'm gonna leave it up to you all, which I want to do by the hour, but I turn the time she be in. Uh, I get fixed to turn in tomorrow. But her last day on that.
December.
Twelfth.
April the thirteenth.
God, I'm gonna have a resignation. Her last day.
Her last day.
That was her last day. One year ago, that happened was her hours had exceeded, she's probably working twenty-four hours one week and sixteen the next week, before the hours were paid here. And I think, uh, caught in the face, she had turned in sixty-nine hours and seventy-two hours, so we had, uh, met our board and we decided that we was gonna let her go, and then she come in next day and.
We didn't do the.
Just have their resignations.
And we're.
Uh, nah, I didn't, I didn't check the hours for myself, that was what they told me when we met, that was what she was telling me.
My, my question is this. Uh, I, I just didn't think it worked for us, for, for us to be making a motion except for a resignation from somebody that don't even work for us.
That's what I'm just saying.
The committee.
Jim, work for us, you're a right commission.
Nah, I was saying, the committee recommended it when she turned it in, I just turned it in without turning.
So, we gonna send some of that to the city too?
Yeah.
They, he's some.
You gonna send it to the city?
I will, but right now, I'm.
We'll send it.
I would send it, I would send it, yeah.
Well, since the city said they're aware, this, to me, uh, this is FYI, we, we don't, they don't want us technically.
Yeah, we just do it all.
So, y'all can go advertise.
Okay. Well, I got the stuff to go advertise, but I won't run everybody by what I was doing, so if you got a question, you know what we got on that.
Right.
So, so we'll be without anybody from the twentieth night, besides me trying to train someone else, that's what we got on that. And then, of course.
That's all.
Right.
Thank y'all so much.
Uh, Jimmy, I was gonna say this, the, I know some of the, some of the youth workers are coming up, we might be able to send some over there to the pool.
Yeah, we, we can, depending on what they'll be doing over there, because we don't wanna make it a liability.
Well, you said it again.
Some of the youth workers, we have youth workers.
What I had talked to, uh, we met last week when the city come over and signed off on the, uh, addition of the, um, locker rooms and showers and all of that, they come and sign off, saying it was through. And, um, I asked them about draining the pool, because we got a client, usually about eight or five years you go in and paint it anyway. Waycaster said he think we can do it. I hadn't ran a body, but I did have the lady from the city over there, and she said, if we drain that cleaner, we gonna get the fire department come back and fill it up like they did the first time. And so, uh, being aware that we probably do that, then on top of that, then last, we had a big main water line burst, so on top of getting that repaired, that, that's what we get.
But he was saying something about the youth workers. We got youth workers, there were summer workers that we have, but we gonna, we gonna see exactly where we gonna fit them in this, in county first, before we do the pool, because we don't want that to be a liability to us.
Let, let, let me ask you a question.
Depending on where they're working.
Excuse me, uh, if, if we decide to send somebody over there, what would they do?
See, that's what, I don't know, that's what.
The pool is not scheduled open to public until the morning that we get.
That's right, so we, I don't think, we don't need to send them over there, 'cause I, that's just a liability.
The war.
The war. Right.
But we do have, we, we do have office workers, not necessarily concession.
They don't need assistance, they won't be doing anything.
Okay.
All right, uh, I do have three forms here, from Miss Angela James for travel. Uh, one hundred and seventy-five miles, one for a hundred and forty-five miles, one for two hundred and thirty-five miles, hundred and thirty-seven dollars, eighty-four dollars, and a hundred and two dollars, thirty-nine cents. They are signed, got, I think they were signed on Mary Kay, I can't really tell.
Where are they going to be done for wedding, on their dates?
Magnolia, Mississippi, Vicksburg, Mississippi, and Jackson, Mississippi.
What date?
April twenty twenty-two.
April twenty, twenty-two?
Mm-hmm. April two thousand twenty-two.
Twenty-two, not, not a specific day.
No, city there.
Not just a month in a year.
You want to say?
That's where she's been or where she's going?
It says, it says where she's going, but I think, I think her dad said she didn't have dates yet. She just saying these are where she's gonna have to go in April, but she don't know when.
So, can we prove that, uh?
Get the dates.
Scott?
These are internal policies, if it's within her travel budget, you can prove it, you know, but well, the rest of the time, we prove travel, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, 'cause I'm not the travel, I don't, I don't go to look at travel sheets or whatever, that's something that y'all do. We have specific dates of travel, correct?
Correct.
And as Mary Kay, her supervisor, I didn't, I wouldn't under that impression, I thought her supervisor was the judge.
Correct.
So, you know, I don't know, maybe Angie does approve on travel, but I don't think so, she's not my supervisor, so you do the same thing, huh?
Be the judge. I guess she don't have her dates.
Don't, don't we pay after she actually does it? What's on you? Because she doesn't.
You can do it.
For the whole answer, the credit.
You can do it.
See, that's, see, that's why she didn't have her dates. If you have her dates, when she gone, then we can approve it. But she's, she's estimated, I mean, she says she, she knows she gotta go for that sale, but she don't know when she gonna go, so.
Yeah, and this is, just out of your training, you just correct that, that's all we're gonna do, and not trying to make it more than what needs to be.
Yeah, COVID to come.
That's what.
So, you saying judge need to sign that?
I, unless Mary Kay can hire and fire, I don't think that's the case, then.
Okay, well, uh, like he said, somebody need to communicate, uh, to her.
That's right.
To let her know that she gonna have to have the dates of travel, and her supervisor gonna have to sign that paperwork.
Right.
That, that's why, like, we had Ray calling that car, but she was there, and my, he said.
Hey, don't do that now, for who these.
Hey, that's what I'm saying, she gotta go from there, and the next meeting, it'll be in May, well, she might get it done, that's why I said, uh, we're right, so we just prove it for, it's a big.
See, I was, I was thinking courts, it's like, at the end of the month.
These are last month of the month.
She have to visit.
By the end of the month.
The employees before court date.
Mm-hmm.
So, now, that's why I was running, have those dates have already taken place, because court is closing, she here next week.
Yeah, see, I asked her, her dad.
It's the last month of the month.
That's it, it's the last month of the month.
Mm-hmm.
She has not taken these trips yet. But she needs a trip, she knows she's gonna have to take, but she didn't have the dates on which she gonna take them.
Oh, good, good, good.
Yeah.
All right, next is a.
The date's at eighteen. Right, I know, so she have to.
Within a week.
She have to, yeah, her, not her dates.
Well, here's.
Well, they're gonna qualify, but she have the dates, yeah.
Next is a request from Mr. Gardner, election commissioner, on reimbursement for travel to a conference on April twenty-seventh.
You don't have, that reimbursement, you said reimbursement? We don't have to prove reimbursement.
Travel.
Well, we don't have to prove a reimbursement.
That's travel.
He ever, he ever done paid. Oh, he had done travel? Is this a reimbursement or a travel?
This is the same one.
He requested a travel.
What are you doing?
Say reimbursement. So.
You going to the conference?
Yes.
What kind of conference?
Training.
Redistricting training.
Redistricting training.
He going to that.
Redistrict classes will be up, ready for one forty-five.
Now, I, I, I'm gonna change before I even do this, I got a problem with this man, because last time, uh, this before y'all got here, uh, election office over there, I ain't gonna say who did it, but they moved some people out of one district to another district, and they no happy, they do not have the authority to do this. The only people can redistrict is supervisor of district, one, two, three, four, and five. So, I, I can't see myself paying for somebody to go to a redistricting class, you know, you have the project, Scott, come, 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 come out of there?
I don't think, oh, I, I don't know what that training is, the other question too, Mr. Gray, is if this is training that one election commissioner's doing, why wouldn't they all be getting the same training, so they're walking on the same page too? That's my, that would be my question with it as well.
Next is a letter of support for the raise grant.
So.
Motion, Mr. Roger, second, I said about the games, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say. Next, I have two letters of support, um, I don't know if y'all saw on the paper, Mississippi Department of Archaic History was awarded an eight million dollar grant for the, this letter's for, we wrote, um, for the um, field school improvements in Jefferson College.
Mm-hmm.
Nice.
And then, for some improvements to, uh, uh, the Grant Village and National Indian Cultural Interchange Center. They were awarded eight million dollars, they're about two million dollars short, so they're requesting two letters of support to be sent to Congressman Thompson, so get him involved in this.
Some of them.
Motion, Mr. Roger, second, I said about the games, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Uh, I was gonna talk about Robbins Lake. Um, we were alerted by DEQ that there was some issues with the construction. The main concern is the pipe that was used. Um, pipe that was put in was the pipe that the road department was told to order by the engineer. So, we are in correspondence right now with DEQ, uh, Terrence Silver has spoken with them, uh, and they are in contact with JKS, trying to see what we're going to do moving forward.
I had asked the contractor to give me a, uh, an estimate, or anyone said offer, I guess it says a better word, to correct this mistake. And he, he sent an offer to both Robbie and myself, but Robbie and I really weren't comfortable with the offer, or at least we wanted to make sure that that offer included some other work that may not have been in there. Uh, we probably will get it, either confirmed or updated today. And then, I talked to NDQ, and I talked with the engineers, JKS. Uh, I, we have given them the correspondence, the, the direction that the county received, 'cause the county's gonna purchase the pipe. We gave them the correspondence, from Jordan Kaiser, saying to buy this pipe. We asked him what the deal is, you know, this is a mistake. He says he's gotta go back and review his file and talk to NDQ. He says he's talked to him briefly, but I talked to him that day, and I said I hadn't heard from him. And this, NDQ seemed pretty firm that the pipe we used was incorrect. Now, that being said, the county and the contractor preferred the pipe that was used. This wasn't our decision, we didn't put it in decision-making, we let that up to the engineer. The pipe that we used is probably preferable for a couple of different reasons. And, but i- if basically their life goes down to this, either NDQ's gonna issue us a permit for that project, or we're gonna demand JKS pay the cost to redo the, to fix that kind of work. I say that, that is my, that is my recommendation to this board, that is, obviously, that's not my decision, but that's my recommendation, either, we get it approved, or they're gonna have to fix.
What was wrong?
With that, with that, I usually did was metal instead of plastic.
Was it coated?
Yes.
Yes, coated metal and, and DEQ weren't plastic. Um, we had emails and stuff back and forth, we, they changed pipe. They changed pipe a couple of times, back and forth, but anyhow, we did have emails of what they told us to order. Like, what they thought our pipe been there.
Initially, I thought maybe we put metal pipe in, what, coated?
Nah.
And that was probably.
It's coated, I mean, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The pipe.
I don't know if we did it.
The pipe was in there previously, with the same type of pipe, was in, that, that pipe was not in failing condition. Fact it was a pain in the butt for them to get rid of.
The same pipe that was in there, and pulled it out, we did for a bigger pipe, but like I said, that's not what we sent to DEQ, that's not what DEQ approved. And once they approved it, yes, that's what it should have been with, but like I said, we, we got our emails back and forth for what they told us to order, and we went back and forth to, for different kind of change, this to this, and then we finally got the email of what we were gonna order, and that's the type of the pipe, was they tell for the pipe then.
Now, there are some things that NDQ wasn't understanding properly about the pipe. For instance, their impression is that it's inundated most of the time, and in fact, it's rarely a federal inundated, unless it's an extreme condition, the pipe should never be inundated.
You're talking about fully, full of water?
Should be, should be touch of water.
Yeah.
Which, and it's not, it's a little.
Which, we got eval, what was the silence, you know?
So, but the, in, in the regulations of NDQ, or the regulations of NDQ, they're not regulations of the county or, or contractor, we don't make those things up. What we want is a permitted road, you know, so that, on top of, we want a road that doesn't flood over and so forth. So, that's what we want, we're not gonna take, take less than.
That's why they have nitpicked this project half to death, I mean, we've been dealing with this two and a half years. And it's all or something for the DEQ.
So, with that being said, I, you know, I just want the board to know that road department did everything, thank goodness they had a paper trail and copies of every email, every aisle was out and everything was crossed, and, and pipe was ordered, that's told order, so it's out of our hands, and I agree with what Terrence Silver said, moving forward. So, sit away a bit, sir.
For me to keep on taking it. Keep on pushing them until they give us the response, if we want.
If we want. Uh, the last thing I want to bring up, the bond, I said I'm gonna bring it up this meeting and, and bring it to the vote. I think in the, you know, talk about five million dollar bond, uh, we've listed our items to be colored in the, uh, initial part of it, with the ball field, improvements to girl softball complex, the radio arena, the digitizing the documents and putting money towards all the parks as a whole, and to take the remaining money left over, get the road manager, and do some, uh, resurfacing on, uh, roads and bollers for your road plan. So, I'm gonna make a motion on that.
So, you made a long time.
Got a motion by me, second, by Super Roger Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, look, 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 okay. Uh, make sure I got a clear understanding. We gonna, do we know how much money we gonna use for parks? Uh, we gonna use what's left over from doing all the parks? And we gonna use the rest of that money for roads?
Yes, sir.
That's the understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All those parks are locked together in one song. All in favor? All opposed? I say. Um, any public comments? Let's see if that, or if we was in here.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Um, I seen the, lost in the conversation, the updated estimate for the Morgantown project. I've heard the IMS engineer say that it was four point five million with the engineering fees included, but somewhere, uh, like the, the county would have been short, um, two point one, I believe, with the federal funds, but then y'all said three point two million. I was trying to figure out where the other million came from.
The original estimate for the entire project was three point two, with the, uh, grant money that we had was, what, two point four? So, but now prices have increased, the new estimate on the entire project originally said was four point two, but that included some hundred thousand, ten hundred thousand of engineering fees, so our new estimate's at four point five. That's a, just a engineer's estimate based, and, and it's not, as he was said, it's not a complete map or whatever. That's a figure that we use or will use to ask the state to help fill in the gaps, or fill in the gaps of that money, since there's some excess road money.
So, you're still looking at about a two point one million gap?
Two point three.
Two point three million gap. All right. Um, and what is exactly needed from JKS on the Morgantown project?
Excuse me?
What is needed from, uh, the engineering, JKS?
What do they have, yeah, some engineering?
What, what, what documentation? What, what, what documentation?
Yeah, there's just, there's a, there's some data, some electronic data plans that we're asking for.
I have a long question.
All right. We got some items to be determined? Free motion? Motion, I said, by Roger, second, by Super Roger Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I have it.